Good evening, and thank you for viewing the September 7th meeting of the Arcata City Council. The City Council meeting is being held as a hybrid meeting with both in-person attendance and teleconference access via Zoom. Before we begin, we just finished up a closed session, and we have a quick report out. We looked into the disposition of a couple of parcels, and our plans go to comply with the Surplus Land Act and provide affordable housing noticing for that. Those parcels obtain a revised appraisal for the parcels, go through the RFP and listing of the parcel process if affordable housing is not viable, and then proceed with the disposition of the parcels. There was a motion made by Councilmember Stillman and seconded by Councilmember Watson, and it passed. Okay, so first item on our agenda this evening, we are going to begin with a land acknowledgement. The city of Arcata acknowledges that the lands we are located on are the unceded ancestral lands of the Wiat tribe. The land that Arcata rests on is known in the Wiat language as Budini, meaning "over in the woods" or "among the redwoods." Past actions by local, state, and federal governments removed the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threatened to destroy their cultural practices. The city of Arcata acknowledges the Wiat community, their elders, both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement seeks to aid in dismantling the legacy narratives that allure colonial it. Our second item, if you'd like to join us, please join us for the flag salute. Will the city manager, please call?
Vice Mayor Schaefer?
Here.
Councilmember Watson?
Here.
Councilmember Matthews?
Here.
Councilmember Stillman? Mayor Atkins Salazar is absent tonight. You have a quorum.
If you wish to make comment during the meeting, either at the two open public comment periods or for an individual agenda item, there are three ways to do so. If you are here in person, please line up behind the podium when the item you would like to speak on is accepting public comment. And just a reminder, I know we are doing the card system for early oral communications, so if you are commenting at the beginning of the meeting on an item not on the agenda, make sure to grab your card. If you have not also, we'll accept the first four people here, then move to Zoom, and then if there's more time during that 50-minute period, we'll go back to in-person. If you are logged onto Zoom, click Raise Your Hand when it is time for public comment on the agenda item you wish to speak. And number three, if you are on the phone, make sure to press *9 on your phone to raise your hand. When it is your turn, you will be prompted to dial *6 on your phone. Again, for each item, we will take in-person public comment first and then move to our online comments. We are not going to be going back and forth, so if you are wanting to comment, please line up at the podium or raise your electronic hand as soon as comment is requested for that item. Okay, next we will be moving on to ceremonial matters, and our first item is a proclamation recognizing September 21st, 2022 as International Day of Peace. This proclamation will be read by Councilmember Matthews.
Proclamation recognizing September 21st, 2022 as the International Day of Peace. Whereas the International Day of Peace was established by the United Nations in 1981 as an observance in September, and in 2001, UN General Assembly set September 21st as an annual day of nonviolence and ceasefire. The theme for 2022 is End Racism, Build Peace. And whereas the United Nations recognizing that lasting peace requires protection of the human rights of all people, social justice and development, economic justice, equality and equity in healthcare and health services, environmental justice and climate action, and that all are critical parts of the peace process. And whereas we recognize that the real peace requires elimination of racism in all forms that racism has created and reinforced inequalities between nations and between peoples within nations, and that these inequities and the resulting conflict exacerbate the ongoing and increased efforts and effects of global warming and the COVID pandemic on human society. This International Day of Peace will be dedicated to learning about racism, collecting and sharing ideas for repairing the damage and making better connections and putting them into action. The world is invited to unite in ending racism and changing our planet for the better in all aspects. And whereas worldwide, nationally, and locally, groups, individuals are working to learn about, recognize, and eliminate racism in all forms and to create a peaceful and more inclusive human society. Whereas the United Nations invites all governments, nations, and communities to renounce racism and end conflict and instead promote peace and harmony by commemorating the day through education, raising public awareness, ending racism, and supporting human rights for all people. There is hope of strengthening the culture of peaceful living by seeking to understand ourselves and others, accepting people of different cultures, countries, and religions, and celebrating our differences to make the world an interconnected, peaceful, and healthy place, which history has shown can be done. Now therefore be it proclaimed that the city council, the city of Arcata hereby recognizes September 21st, 2022 as the International Day of Peace and encourages the community to work together to end racism and create lasting peace for all people, locally and globally, dated September 7th, 2022. Bye.
And I believe we have Martha Hart on the proclamation?
Yep, go ahead Martha, we can hear you.
Okay, good, thanks. Hello, Arcata Council participants. Thank you for this proclamation. My name is Martha Hart. I'm from Kunalik Community International League for Peace, Freedom, or Welfare. To increase the threat of nuclear war, new attacks, the constant rain, the ongoing and increased challenge of climate change, devastating conflicts, and the global and local political cost of short-term crisis, now is it's time to celebrate and restate ourselves. Kunalik Community is a care support organization in the county and runs the Warm Line on weekends off mental health and energy. Thanks for this year's United Nations International Day of Peace. It's End Racism, Build Peace. Built at any country that are tending racism, uprooting, helping, helping, and supporting I will celebrate this day for fighting for rights. I will also be attending a Zoom candlelight peace vigil put on by Wilf Women's International League for Peace and Freedom and Kunalik Community. Go to k-u-n-l-e-community.org/events for the meeting ID and house code. Hope to see you there. Thank you again for this proclamation.
Thank you Martha, we appreciate you joining us this evening. Okay, item B will be a proclamation in recognition of Coastal Cleanup Month, September 2022, and this will be read by Councilmember Stillman.
Proclamation of the city of Arcata in recognition of Coastal Cleanup Month with September 2022. Whereas the state of California has a varied coastline of sandy beaches, rocky shores, productive estuaries, marshes, tidal flats, urban areas, and harbors. And whereas the marine environment is one of the most valuable resources of recreation, tourism, fishing, and other coastal activities. Coastal protection is responsible, shared by residents and the business community and the public institutes. And whereas the North Coast Environmental Center is the Humboldt County's organizer for 2022 Coastal Cleanup Month, taking place every weekend in September, during which it anticipated 1,000 people will clean beaches, rivers, and estuaries along the entire Humboldt County coastline. Whereas the North Coast Environmental Center's Beach Beautification Program, now adopted A Beach, began in Humboldt County over 40 years ago and is now celebrated throughout California and around the world. Last year, Humboldt County volunteers picked up over 5,000 pieces of trash from around the shorelines and coasts. And whereas the residents can be proud that this year, after year after year, Humboldt County continues to be among the state leaders and number of volunteers who help keep our oceans, rivers, and coastlines clean. Now therefore be proclaimed that the City Council of the city of Arcata recognizes the month of September as Coastal Cleanup Month and encourages businesses, individuals, service groups, and public institutions to safely hit the beaches to jointly promote a healthy, productive coastal environment. Dated September 7th, 2022, signed by Vice Mayor Sarah Schaefer. Let's see, is Ivy present? Thank you.
Coast Environmental Center, and I want to thank you guys for the proclamation, as well as, oh, wonderful. Encourage folks to check out a list of cleanups on our website where they can sign up to volunteer. We have prizes, and it's going to be a lot of fun. Thank you.
Awesome, thank you Ivy.
Thank you Ivy.
Okay, that will take us to our fifth item on the agenda here, which is a report by Commission or Committee. And this evening, we have our annual report from the Public Safety Committee, this evening presented by Fred Johansson. So thank you Fred, let's hear what you got.
Do you already have a copy? Okay, good, okay. Well, I live at 2295 Ross Street, and I just want to say thank you to Emily's crew for picking up a bed on the walking street last week. And it seems that they're really on it right now. I gotta just say, I'm really happy there. So, I'll get with the intro here, and you'll hear what we've been doing this year, which I think we're trying to, I know we're trying to include everyone on our committee in what we do. So, here we go. Our committee was formed in 2018 in response to an attempted rape of a 12-year-old girl in Cahill Park. Meetings were organized by the city, and a committee was created to develop solutions to improve the safety of schoolchildren to get to and from Arcata Elementary. As a result of the findings of that committee, our Public Safety Committee was created by municipal code. Since our committee was created, we've undertaken tasks for the council in the wake of George Floyd's death and the creation of Black Lives Matter. We recommended that, or what has now become our MIST program, and have overseen the implementation in our police department with California state mandated police reform. We've also witnessed that every officer is trained in de-escalation tactics and seen the reform of our use-of-force rules. Part of this was, of course, due to the death of Josiah Lawson and the recommended reforms suggested by the National Police Reforms Report from that. More recently, there are problems that our police forces had to deal with. During the past two years, the COVID pandemic brought many challenges. It was interesting for us to see which types of crimes increased and which of those decreased. We had a flurry of smash-and-grab robberies throughout the city. Those have abated, but what question was always asked? Do you have a camera? We had and continue to see the theft of catalytic converters from automobiles and the increase in auto theft. The last to me and most highness are our recent hate crimes. We will continue to be responsive to the needs of our public safety officers in our city. This year has been full of change. Notably, we are just coming out of COVID, and Humboldt State University has become Cal Poly Humboldt and started a process of growth. The economy has changed and staffing has become difficult. Property values have skyrocketed, and neighborhood housing is increasingly becoming owner-occupied. Some neighborhoods are becoming gentrified, mine included. Our committee has two new members this year, Justin Fox and Laura Montanha. They both have incredible backgrounds, and we're grateful to have them on our committee. Our committee members have been active in our community this year. Several of us have participated in ride-alongs with the APD. We visited Carlson Park with KUNA to meet with the homeless there. Five of our members took part in the PIT count, myself included. And I would encourage members of the city council to participate in this next year. It is an eye-opener, okay? So, the first of our recommendations is the North Town Bridge Project. And we've been working on this for quite a few years, and it started, really started with us with a SEPTED report, which is, I'm not reading here now. Melissa Lazon, this is her baby that she's been working on, and I, she is now trained with SEPTED, so she can do those reports. If you have problems or questions about the safety and the Gateway Project, she's the go-to person, okay? Just want you to know that. So, the North Town Footbridge has long been a safety challenge for students and our community as a whole. As far back as 2006, a city-funded report stated that students referred to the footbridge as "the gauntlet." At the formation of the Public Safety Task Force, precursor to the Public Safety Committee, the footbridge was at the center of our Safe Corridor Plan. The idea being that safely connected communities are thriving communities. In 2018, the Public Safety Committee requested a SEPTED report, Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design, from APD. This report revealed a longstanding need for landscaping to provide adequate line of sight for pedestrians, as well as additional lighting, repair to the pavement, and concrete along the bridge. And unfortunately, the presence of human feces, we had somebody camping on the bridge. Since the initial report, there was, there's been a pickup in momentum that resulted in the formation of a team consisting of artists from the Playhouse, and HSU, Arcata Main Street, city staff, and HSU administration. In the spring and summer of 2022, momentum and attendance saw a drop due to faculty turnover at Cal Poly Humboldt and the need for some of the team to temporarily shift focus. At the time, the Public Safety Committee reached out to Cal Poly Humboldt Administration to determine next steps with an updated SEPTED report, which is included in our packet, and a proposal for a collaborative mural project. At this time, Cal Poly Humboldt Administration is in discussion with the city of Arcata to determine how and what cooperation and shared resources are available for the project to move forward. The Public Safety Committee strongly recommends that the city council commit to making this project a priority. This includes staff time and funding to work with Cal Poly Humboldt to build a proposal for Caltrans that includes not only the needed safety improvements, but additional safety infrastructure such as a call box and/or cameras, which HSU has on their side, or, excuse me, Cal Poly Humboldt. The Public Safety Committee also recommends that the city council consider how a collaborative mural involving university students and local artists fits with the existing Arcata Strategic Arts Plan. Improvements to the North Town Footbridge would also dovetail nicely with the already approved project to improve G&amp;H Street, the G&amp;H Street corridor to the plaza. Any future advancement on this project will require the full support of the city council, adequate funding from the city and the university, and dedicated staff time to produce the prodosal. And then, there's the note to look at the attached documents. Now, this next project I led, two of our subcommittees were combined to combine the goal this year, this year, to improve access for Cal Poly Humboldt. The new committee was named the Safe Corridors Committee. The purpose of this was to work with, okay, CPH, you know, hey, it's an acronym. So, to plan for modal improvements on the North Town Bridge, traffic between the proposed Craftsman Mall dorms and along the G&amp;H Street corridors. We met with the Vice President of Facilities Management, Mike, and Cal Poly Humboldt Police Chief Morgan, who has since gone away, and now the Acting Head of the Cal Poly Humboldt Police, Jim Cress. I also provided a letter to the, of the meeting held by Cal Poly concerning the new dorms and the Craftsman Mall site. I also attended meetings of our Planning Commission, thank you, and the Traffic Safety Committee. We also met with the city manager Karen Deemer numerous times to discuss these issues. Thanks for giving us your time. Our concern is the safety of students who will be traveling to and from the Craftsman Mall dorms. There are two entrances planned for the new facility. The northern entrance is St. Louis Road, which enters the western end of the new dorm facility. The 2017 Arcata Central Traffic Study notes that this route is unsafe for pedestrians and bicycles. There are no sidewalks, and the normal truck traffic to Mad River Lumber Company is over 30 semi-trucks a day. And when I went there a day before yesterday, there was a semi ready to be loaded, another one being loaded, and that truck was in the middle of St. Louis Road. Okay, just saying. The second proposed entrance on the south end of the development is I Street, and then to the street circle at the intersection on Foster and Sunset Avenue via J Street. The two subsequent intersections en route to Cal Poly Humboldt are considered to be heavily impacted by traffic, by the Arcata Traffic Study. An added source of foot and bicycle traffic is the Rails to Rails Route that enters between the Foster Avenue Circle and the intersection at the top of the bridge. People living in this area, including my wife, have known in many close calls for pedestrians through these intersections today. Our recommendation for the Craftsman Mall Dorm Project is to conduct a traffic study to implement modifications to existing roads, bike, and pedestrian paths with the support and cooperation of Cal Poly Humboldt before the dorms are completed. Once the safety modifications are identified, I have no doubt that nature is going to take care of it. The, when you look at the 2017 Traffic Study and you go over what was suggested, every one of the recommendations has been done, okay? That's why I'm certain it's going to get done. Okay. So, once the safety modifications are identified, we recommend that they be implemented as a high priority as soon as the needed funding can be found. Okay. Then the next recommendation is support for additional homeless services. And both Anjali Browning and Melissa Lazon both work for Arcata House. So, this is near and dear to our entire committee. So, support the creation of a day-use center, alternative shelter, and/or navigation center to provide immediate housing solutions and services. Homelessness has been a public safety priority since the inception of the Public Safety Task Force and the subsequent Public Safety Committee, PSC. The PSC has previously recommended both long-term housing solutions as well as short-term assistance to meet the immediate needs of Arcata's unsheltered community members. With the expansion of federal and state funding available for homeless services in response to the pandemic, the city of Arcata sees the opportunity to make significant commitments to homeless solutions over the past year. Thank you. The PSC commends the city of Arcata for its sponsorship of two Home Key 2.0 projects, the only Home Key 2.0 projects awarded in Humboldt County. That will together add 138 new supportive housing units for people who are experiencing homelessness in Arcata or to Arcata housing stock within the next six months. The PSC views this new housing as an essential piece of an overall solution to homelessness in Humboldt County, but the PSC encourages the city to continue to sponsor additional supportive housing development as the city's homeless population continues to expand and housing becomes increasingly scarce and out of reach. The PSC also commends the city of Arcata for its recent allocation of, and I don't know what this is, CDBG funds to expand homeless services by shoring up Arcata House Partnership's walk-up and street outreach programs, as well as Cooperation Humboldt's street outreach program. This funding is providing much-needed support to address the day-to-day needs of people experiencing housing and food insecurity. Nevertheless, the PSC considers the development of a day-use center and navigation center is critical to the successful engagement of those in most need of services and essential for alleviating the impact of homelessness on businesses and residential communities. For this reason, day-use and navigation services remain one of the top priorities for the PSC in the coming year. Of particular note, the PSC applauds the city of Arcata for its groundbreaking launch of Humboldt County's first safe parking program in collaboration with Arcata House Partnership earlier this year. Despite experiencing early safety issues associated with unpermitted campers outside the safe parking program, this project has stabilized and now appears to be operating with almost no negative impact to the community. Although a one-year pilot program, the PSC views this program as filling a crucial gap in short-term services by effectively increasing immediate sheltering options for people living in their vehicles. The PSC strongly urges the city of Arcata to seek funding to continue and expand upon this program beyond the first year as the numbers of people living in vehicles and alternative shelters appears to be increasing almost exponentially. This program in conjunction with support for other forms of short-term and long-term shelter are essential for providing immediate relief from the negative impacts of homelessness while assisting individuals in stabilizing and obtaining permanent housing. Although the city of Arcata has made many important steps toward increasing services to individuals experiencing homelessness, homelessness remains at the forefront of community-wide concerns. Sufficient affordable housing remains elusive throughout the county, and the numbers of individuals facing unstable housing continues to rise. It is the opinion of the PSC that the city of Arcata must keep homeless solutions as a top priority for future planning, and homelessness retains its place as the top priority of the Public Safety Committee in the coming year. Our committee has recommended in the past the MIST program be instituted in Arcata. It has evolved over time to now independently working without an officer present unless needed. We also continue to advocate for more MIST clinicians, and we support their cooperation with Arcata House Partnership. Additionally, we support the addition of the 988 phone answering service to our community and look to it as an additional tool for our ambassadors and public service officers to use. Future goals. Well, I'm looking here, and I'm thinking I must be missing a paragraph. But I, I'm gonna, I'm just, okay, if it's here, just know that I'm going to end with that because I think it's of note. Future goals. As we look to the future, there are many opportunities for our committee to serve our community. Our first task will be to review what we've accomplished. And looking at the police budget and where the money is allocated, that's going to be pretty easy. We need to have our members involved and aware of the problems and changes that are happening in our community. They are happening so rapidly, it's really difficult. I don't know how you are keeping up with it all, honestly. We want to work with and partner with other city committees such as transportation and planning. Cal Poly Humboldt has a Public Safety Committee and has invited us to attend their meetings. Because of the North Town Footbridge and Craftsman Mall projects are intended to make our streets and walking paths safer, we would like to become involved with our city's new commitment to the implementation with the complete streets policy for the city of Arcata. The policy directs the city to direct the design, construction, reconstruction, repair, and maintenance efforts on the city's roadways, bridges, pathways, sidewalks, to create an integrated transportation network that is safe, accessible, comfortable, accommodating, and welcoming to all users. Our homeless population is a priority for our community, and we appreciate all the effort that this council has expended to create two new housing facilities with social services into being. The relocation of the homeless committee in Carlson Park to new housing and the creation of a new park will create our city's first river park. The creation of the new car park is already providing much-needed help for those who have been living in their vehicles. Okay, this is what I was missing, okay, the next. The new ambassador program with the assistance of Arcata House is our first effort to improve public safety without having armed officers. Check that off. That's the first in Humboldt County, and we applaud you for that effort. We are excited to see these efforts develop and mature. We have an opportunity to recognize other community organizations and individuals who are also helping to make our city safer. In the past, these organizations and individuals have provided cold-weather shelters, and they continue to house the homeless and feed the hungry. They provide counseling, gardens, meals, clothing, and a helping hand. Integrating them into the system will give us more options for solving the problems our community faces. Our community has been focused on our city's provided services. In our city, we can be served by many community agents as we call 911. Besides the Arcata Police Department, we see every day that the county sheriff's department, Cal Poly Police, California Highway Patrol can and do help police our community. As Cal Poly Humboldt expands into the city, we will see As Cal Poly Humboldt expands into the city, we will see them patrolling university-owned properties. If we need a first responder, it will most likely be a member of the Arcata Fire Department headquartered in McKinleville. We will need to monitor how and to whom they are responding. Our community's future goals include focusing on public safety in our business areas and neighborhoods. We will continue to work in the North Town and Valley West. We will continue with our efforts concerning nuisance abatement, problems with parties, and graffiti. The committee continues to monitor the police reform, policy review, and intentions to our neighborhood's public safety concerns. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Wonderful. Thank you, Fred, for that very thorough, excellent report and for all the work that the committee does. I mean, just seeing this, this report right here, we know how much you guys are doing. Do we have any questions or comments from the council?
I just wanted to tell you what those initials stood for, and so you'll know where the money, where the money came for the housing.
Yes.
And that's the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Thank you.
And so, that's, you know, then you thanked us for that, and this is where the funding came from. And also, I just read that they're going to be probably reopening the Mad River Fire Station.
Yes, they are.
So, that, that's another.
They have, they got, you know, it's funny how things happen when you're walking around town, ran into a fire, fire person on Friday and talked to him because my person I was going to have a talk with was, was late. So, he explained the whole thing to me. And we also discussed for, just for your, you know, the ladder truck. And the question I have is if it takes 60 feet to deploy a fire truck along the street, how much space does it take to deploy a ladder truck? So, you know, I think we have not commented on the Gateway Project. It seems like we have too many goals.
You have a lot going on.
Yes.
For sure.
And it's not that there aren't issues that we would like to, to deal with. But we're only five years in existence, and if we are able to get to work with other committees, we're going to make more connections, and we're going to be more effective. So, I'm hoping that's what we're going to be able to work on this year.
Well, I have to say, I'm excited that you're thinking about the crossing, the bridge that goes across the freeway.
Yes.
And you haven't walked that, you have to walk it at night to see how much light there is on there, and that's always been an issue is, is the lighting.
Yes.
And people would take markers, and they would mark out the lens, so it would be dark.
They did, they do.
And so, I'm thinking that's something that Caltrans, we really need to figure out the lighting system on that and how that could be made, something that would provide more light. It's not going to bother cars driving underneath it and just to have more light on that. I'm also, it's always have been thinking about what fun it would be to have some kind of a graphic that would be on the base of it. Of course, we know that down at the Playhouse, they have to repaint every so often, and I think Jackie's here somewhere, and I could see you when you came in. But I think that that's a, really a good idea, and make it more fun, a place that you could talk about and visit.
Right. And I know that's mentioned in Melissa's report, and we spoke today, and one of the things we talked about was graffiti, and, you know, we would like to deal with that. And thank you to our police department, who is now sending out letters to abate the nuisance of graffiti. It's been interesting in the last two weeks since the university got going, the additional graffiti. But that's what it is. So, but I was going to say, you know, the, the, driving through Eureka today, they just finished a project underneath the bridge, and it's absolutely gorgeous, and I totally agree with your suggestion. Okay?
So, the, the other thing I think is an issue, I don't know if this would be your issue, but it's an issue in Arcata is the free boxes.
Yes.
And we, we see those free boxes around, and my feeling about free boxes, is okay if I talk about this?
It's a public safety.
It's part of, I think, public, it ends up in our waterways, it ends up in our beaches. We have, we, people that have these free boxes, they either can go to Arcata House, they can go to the hospice place and see if they can give their things away. If they have them, if they put them out at eight in the morning, they need to bring them in by six at night, and if nothing's gone, it needs to go into the trash. And then it'll keep it from, and all these campgrounds, everywhere we find it, and that's a lot of work for city staff to continually clean it up. Takes away from other duties. So, I just, I don't know how, if you even talk about that, but that's.
We haven't talked about that, but in my, I can just tell you, we have, let's see, we have two small libraries, which, you know, the mini libraries that are in boxes. We have two of those in our neighborhood. We have one person who has taken a, an old newspaper, a rack container, that's now being used to provide food for the homeless, and we have boxes that are put out constantly. And I think that they, the, the idea is that it's for, to help our homeless community.
Well, they, it, it does, for a period of time, and then you have to take it, pick it up and take it away.
Right.
I mean, that's what they've been doing at Carlson Park, the cleanups, and it's amazing the amount of items that look like they could have come out of a free box. But thank you very much, I don't want to keep you any longer.
Yes, no, no, I mean, we could, we could have a nice conversation about this.
Yes, we could, couldn't we?
Thank you very much.
Great. Do we have any more questions from anybody? I saw folks writing stuff down now. Okay. Okay, I thought you, thought you might.
You do?
Yeah.
Oh, good. Yeah.
So, yeah, what's been reported to me by community members that attend your meetings is that, you know, while, you know, I think all of our committees are really dedicated, really hardworking, you know, I've heard the opinion expressed more than once that you are the hardest-working committee in the city and that you're incredibly dedicated. You are the most committee-member-driven committee, and for that, I'm really grateful. I think that's a really good example for what's possible from our committees and the dedication from our community members. So, thank you very much. I've also heard positive feedback about City Manager Deemer's attendance at the meetings, making sure that the community was aligned with council goals, so I really appreciate that as well. And, yeah, you know, they did bring us some recommendations. I think they make sense, and I think that, yeah, you know, we should consider supporting those recommendations and moving them forward. And, and then I did have a question for Chief Ahern, if he was available. And then while he's coming up.
I'll share it with him, with the podium. He'd be happy to. Although, is it, yeah, I mean, I mean, the glare, though.
Yeah. Yeah, so, so right now, is it, it's like, we have about three on-duty officers at any given time, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. So, yeah, you know, what I, what I come back to is, well, first, you know, it's finding this balance between, you know, spending the appropriate amount of money on, I think, essentially, you know, armed law enforcement versus, you know, other people that do more types of intervention work that don't need to carry a firearm. I think that's, to me, that's what it kind of essentially comes down to. And I feel like the baseline, you know, need that I just always want to make sure we have addressed is, you know, what we saw happen with the tragic murder of Josiah Lawson. And, you know, from the Police Foundation report, the findings are real, you know, there were a lot of things that went wrong, but I think one of the big findings was that we did not have enough resources available to get on the scene right away, to, you know, do crowd control, to protect the evidence, you know, things like that. And I understand we have, you know, some really good mutual aid agreements, and we have, you know, really good partners in, in law enforcement, but, you know, it doesn't seem like anything can really replace that, you know, the value of having our own, you know, officers, I guess, be more immediately available. And so, I mean, in my mind, you know, I feel like it would be reasonable to provide funding to where we had at least four officers on duty at any given time. I mean, that's just, you know, just kind of along those, along that line of thinking. I'm just wondering, you know, do you have any thoughts about that? Yeah.
Yes, sir. I think we've, you know, Arcata has really done a good job in the last few years striking the appropriate balance. The, the Foundation Report and our own analysis certainly identified some areas that we needed to improve on. For example, this city and our city manager, working with our personnel department, you know, created a job description for a civilian evidence technician position, which we didn't have the night that Josiah was murdered. So, you know, that person rolls out with our investigative division now, and back then, we didn't have an investigative division. So, now we have a sergeant and two detective positions, one of which is staffed right now, the other one we promoted to the outreach position because that's a, that's a high priority of this council and this city, you know, as well. I don't think anyone discounts the value of what an armed police officer brings to any scene, but certainly as soon as you triage it and realize that the tools and the skills they bring are not necessarily needed, if you have the non-sworn element that has the expertise to then transition the problem to them, it's certainly the most practical thing to do. The other thing specifically about how many officers are on duty at one time, this council and prior councils have been very supportive of finding additional monies to perhaps add to our existing staff. Problem is, we're having a real difficult time identifying and locating people who want to join not just the Arcata Police Department, but law enforcement in general. But again, I will credit our city manager and this council for finding the money that will enable us and is enabling us to go out on the road and recruit. We're having some success with that, we're very appreciative of that, but our staffing right now, you know, we are, we're four below our budgeted staffing. We've got a couple of officers that are looking for opportunities outside of, of Arcata simply for family reasons. So, we realize that recruiting, retention is going to be an ongoing need for the next several years, but just knowing that if we do identify those folks, that we have the support of this council, if we do come back, you know, and ask for additional funds to perhaps meet or even exceed our budgeted staffing, given the tremendous challenges that we are experiencing, you know, as a city, the, the potential growth, that's a good place for a chief to be at.
So, is there anything we can do, you know, within reason to, you know, I guess, make it more enticing to work for the Arcata Police Department?
Yes, I'll, I'll deliver four applications to all of you right now, and I can have to be backgrounded in the academies tomorrow morning.
Yeah.
Well, it's everywhere. Recruitment is very difficult, no matter where, and every day you read about it, and it's, it's, it's not only police departments, it's everywhere. So, I think until that all changes, I think COVID had a big significance causing this, and there's a whole different thought process that's going through people's minds now that we've had COVID, and they had a different experience. So, I don't know what kind of incentive unless you want to go to work for the police department.
Well, usually it's financial, right? You know, it's hiring, hiring bonuses and, and things like that, I think it's pretty common.
You have to find someone that's going to want to even do that. So, I think we're, I think they're doing a great job, and I really appreciate it. I see on your cars that you, you have availability for officers, I thought that was a great way to advertise.
Right. And, and, I, I just knowing that we have your support with not only, you know, with potential future additions to the organization, but the, you've allocated funds in the moment for us to go on the road and to really recruit here locally, you know, that, that's part of our goal is to, hopefully, we can, we can, you know, our brand is appealing to many people right here in Arcata and Humboldt County, but the funds enable us to, to get back on the university campus, down to CR, go to different academies, starting with Northern California, just got our brand out there. You've, you've given us money to do advertising, which we've never done before, where advertising in trade publications. We do have four people in backgrounds right now, you know, so it, it's working, it does take time. I don't know if there's anything else you can do. The fact that you support what it is we're doing as an organization, the fact that you're providing us funds to continue to be a best practices organization, then really, to be honest with you, it's up to me to get out there and find people to join our great police department and work for a wonderful city.
Thank you, Chief. Thank you. I just, you know, you bring up this one crazy thing, I'm going to say it's crazy, but years ago, when they didn't have enough jurors for a trial, they'd go out and pick people off the street, and they'd say, come on, you're going to be a juror today, you're going to be a juror, you're going to come in.
That's called kidnapping, ma'am.
Well, that's, I think that's what they did, and they had to come in and be in the jury that day, but I don't think we can do that for police officers.
No, I'll be in prison tomorrow for that, so.
Okay, well, thank you, Chief. Do we have any more questions from council on the Public Safety Committee report?
So, yeah, how's our crime rate looking?
Our crime rate?
Yeah.
Oh, you know, we're doing really well from a violent crime perspective, very few call-outs right now. And, and, you know, factors are a lot of times demographic. Property crimes, we're, you know, we're very similar to other jurisdictions, you know, it's very difficult out there, the economy is, is bad, and oftentimes, some people resort to stealing property that others have worked very hard to attain. So, you know, that is a difficult challenge, certainly not one we're not willing to continue to chip away at. But, you know, if, if I had to choose one or the other, I'll take a property crime over a person getting assaulted any day of the week. However, we, we need to continue to work on that, educate people, emphasize the need to really care for your own property without victim blaming, right? Everyone should be able to go to sleep at night with your windows open and your doors unlocked and your car windows down, right? That, that is an expectation of any civilized society. Unfortunately, you know, we've learned as a country and as a world that you're probably going to lose some of that property, but it's not your, it's never the victim's fault. So, we still have a lot of work cut out for us, but I would say Arcata continues to be a very safe city, and that is a good place to be, especially as we welcome our university community back. We're, we're coming back from COVID, we've got some tremendous plans evolving as a city, so, you know, we're progressing well, we're trending well from a crime perspective.
Great, thank you. My last question is maybe for Karen. So, some of the research I've seen shows that communities that have more access to mental health services, there can be correlations between lower crime rates and also lower rates of homelessness. And, you know, I, I understand, you know, we work with MIST, and they help us out and stuff, but how much, like, you just like, you know, rough estimate, do we as a city spend on mental health services for the community?
I would have to probably get a little more definition on the question. You know, our MIST as a direct allocation is probably, probably trending at about 90,000 a year right now, that's direct outreach and street outreach services. I would consider a lot of the programs that are operated through our parks and recreation divisions to also be mental health programs. On the prevention side, we have our juvenile diversion program that does a lot of direct work with mental health services with youth in our community. So, I mean, we could put together a number of what we think would capture that, but still the direct one-on-one service with the exception of MIST and the exception of the juvenile diversion programs that actually do mental health counseling. You know, most of that service is still provided at a county level and funded by the state at a county level.
Thanks.
To follow up on that, it's not our, a city's job is not to provide those kind of services, it's, it's what's happened over the years as far as homeless services and so forth, we've had to step up the plate and do that. But the county is the one that is organized around that. They have the mental health services, as I'm sure you know that, so, thank you.
Yeah, I don't know that it's, if it's the city's job or not, I haven't really seen any state policy or anything that, that says that, but I think it is something, you know, that's important to the community. Again, there is evidence that shows it can, you know, help with crime rates and homelessness, and, so, yeah, just maybe in a future goal-setting session, it'd be something worth taking a look at. I think, let me just double-check really quick.
So, are we? Maybe while, while we're double-checking, let's see if we have any members of the public waiting to comment on this item, anybody here in person wishing to comment on the Public Safety Committee report, or if there's anybody online.
I don't see anybody online. I did just want to update Councilmember Stillman. Oh, we've got somebody coming to the podium. Okay, while you're walking up there, we did a pretty large replacement of the lighting system on the walking bridge. I'm not going to call it perfect, but it is, I'm going to say 100% better than it was, and we will continue to work to improve that. And the council did budget, in the GNH Green and Gold Corridor, there is 10,000 that is set aside of funds to support the bridge project. There is a, a bridge group that's working, both with the Public Safety Committee, Playhouse Arts, and they're connected into Equity Arcata's Just Starts with Jim Wogum from the Cal Poly Campus.
Great, okay, public comment, go ahead, sir.
My comment is, I've lived in a lot of cities, and...
My comment is, I've lived in a lot of cities, and this is one city that, interesting, I've never seen anybody pulled over for violations for speeding, and I've noticed that there, we have, we have a problem there, and, and I don't see really action happening there. You know, this is a leading indication of people being injured or, or killed, I mean, that, that's the staff, the debt on that is pretty overwhelming, you know, and it's, it's kind of not only speeding, it's also, you know, somebody like myself who rides a bike a lot, there's a lot of people that are driving and they're doing drugs too at the same time, you know, and, and you can get a lot of data from the insurance industry on things like texting too, so I don't think the streets are that safe regarding those, and we're spending a lot of time and money talking about the gateway and what we're going to do with bicycle routes into the future, and I know a city such as Davis, who is probably about 40 years ahead of us as far as setting up, you know, safe lanes and stuff for bicycles and paths, you know, and that's a huge university town with a lot of students, that's a big part of it, but the other half of it, what Davis does is, you know, I, I know people who live there, if you're speeding in Davis, you're going to get a ticket, if you're doing drugs, driving, you're going to get a ticket, you're texting, you're probably a good chance you're going to get a ticket, so that is part of the strategy here, and that's my, my guess at it, but maybe you could provide the data from the police department on that, because I like to see whether there has been people being stopped for those, and, I mean, it's right in front of where I lived, 25 mile an hour speed limit, car flipped upside down right there, so it's just amazing how things that are happening that we're sort of not addressing, you know, we kind of, we address it by saying we want 25 mile an hour speed limits, but we're not really looking at some of the evidence that's giving us clues that what's going to happen in, in the future, when our population grows from Cal Poly, from the Gateway Project, there's going to be a lot more cars, thousands of cars, and there's going to be a lot more people on the streets, and especially after what was asked tonight as far as how many officers we, we have, you know, I'm, I'm hoping to be more optimistic about it, but it's, doesn't, doesn't seem like we're going to have a really safe environment in the future without addressing these issues, so, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any more final comments from the council on this one? Okay. Great. At that point, we will move on to item number six on our agenda, which is early oral communications. The City Council values your comments, and this 15-minute time period allows people to address the council on matters not on the agenda. Pursuant to Brown Act, the council cannot discuss or take action on items that are not listed on our posted agenda. At the end of oral communications, the council may respond to statements, supported requests require, that require council action will be set for future agenda or referred to staff. Speakers are limited to two minutes, and there will also be time for public comment specifically on each agenda item, and again, at the end of the meeting, listed under item 12. So please make your way to the podium if you have one of those numbers, and now, if you are on Zoom, is a great time to raise your hand or press star nine, and so we will begin with two minutes for these folks. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Jacqueline Dandenon, I'm the Executive Artistic Director of Playhouse Arts, and we've just heard Playhouse brought up a little bit today, dealing with public safety, and what Playhouse Arts brings to the community. We've been working with the Public Safety Committee on the bridge project, we've been working with Equity Arcata, we've been working with getting artists in schools, we've been working on many fronts within the community, and I wanted to direct something to you about the Gateway Project. I was ecstatic to see the Playhouse and the Creamery District photos well within the strategic, the, the Gateway Project, and excited to see the arts so present in that project. And what I'm proposing, and my proposition to council, is that there is some funding allocated for arts in Arcata within that strategic, the Gateway Plan. I see parks have a stipend and a, and a possible financial benefit from the Gateway Project, and I think it's essential that we support the arts in that project, and that we try to control gentrification, because that's what happens in arts districts. The artists come in, they make it groovy, they make it cool, they have a vision, then they get driven out, and I think that it's a chance for Arcata to really redefine that and say, what are the strategic objectives within the Creamery District? How do we make sure that artists are supported, not only with affordable housing, but happenings, that developers don't just put up a sculpture and say, yeah, see, I supported the arts, but there's a fund there so that artists can decide what they do with that money. And so that's my provocation for you today, and I'll be sending a little letter as well, but I thought I'd come today to say thank you for everything that you do for your service to the community, and you'll probably hear from me again.
Thank you, Jackie.
Here we go. My name is Joanne McGary, and I kind of think that it would be nice for all of those speaking to actually say their name, it happens at other public forums, and sometimes, you know, us regulars think everybody assumes they know who we are, but I'm introducing myself tonight, and we'll try to continue to do that so that I can know who's talking and what they said, so that I can maybe follow up with them, so I just wanted to say that. But secondly, I wanted to show you an old sign that I carry around with me, I repurpose and recycle and reuse my signs, and we've had some hot weather today and three years ago, as I continually remind you, the City of Arcata did recognize when the United Nations was having the climate summit in 2019 about, you know, the climate reality and the urgency and the potential, you know, crises that we are facing in terms of climate, as it applies to many local and municipal and community-wide issues locally. But then, I'm going to end my presentation or my talk at this, at the beginning of this meeting about the THC and the CBD ideas I brought up before, because I want to remind all of us in this room, listening and out there, that the THC means, for me, transparency, trustworthiness, and truth, and the H is humility, humaneness, and honesty, and the C means caring, compassion, and confidence or committedness, and then the CBD, we got compassion and bravery and decisiveness. So those are my drugs of choice that I share with you again, because that's what this community needs, and especially I want to talk about the T, transparency. Thank you.
Thank you, Joanne.
Gregory Daggett, good evening. Last week, I emailed you the staff and the city council information regarding environmental justice and urban planning, so I don't, I don't recall this ever being brought up, but there was quite a bit of information regarding that, and regarding the Gateway Project, when I look at that, I see potentially the same issues and mistakes that were done in the last seven, 70 years in urban planning. You have cars coming from the north that are getting off at sunset, and basically, we're talking about potentially thousands of cars coming from that direction. We also have additional traffic coming from the south, so it, it doesn't seem like this plan and the gateway is addressing that at all. It seems like it's just making the same mistakes in the past and setting us up as all like human guinea pigs as far as air pollution and, and basically noise issues. The other part of this, that email was addressing environmental concerns, and one of them that I pointed out was Noah with the direct link to showing what the wastewater treatment plant would look like in two to three feet of seawater, and basically, this is an issue that you're, you're addressing from the standpoint of you're voting on, the Beryl District, and so you're making a big mistake by actually not saving that site for the future, because that's been identified as the future site for the wastewater treatment plant. There's also quite a few letters from, from Humboldt State University addressing this issue with environmental science instructors that have PhDs in this, that are saying, don't do that, and on top of that, our own staff from the past, in 2016, has addressed this by having your engineer saying that it'll be underwater, and also the fact that David Loyah even said that the future of Arcata is inland, so the question is, why are you heading towards the bay with all this information? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Fred Wise. A few things, I have a new, some new webpages just for the city council, just arcata1/council, arcata1.com/council. There's pages of links and information that I thought might be useful for you. For example, there's a page, there's 14 letters that were received regarding the advisory committee, they're listed there, you can look at each letter separately, and I made a two-sentence summary of each letter, so you can skim the whole thing in about five minutes, or less. There are maps and aerial views of L Street, and photographs and diagrams, for if that's helpful, and if there's other things that you want to see, please contact me. Second item is the, the surveys. We acknowledged that the slide of surveys were not valid, and for a variety of reasons, but they're still referred to, which I think is improper. There was a survey done at the January Open House. In April, I volunteered to set up a group to compile that, that information still has not yet been compiled. A local citizen compiled, it was pretty time-consuming for her. According to what she found, the number of people who wanted four stories or less was 64, number of people who said eight stories was okay was zero. I disagree with her findings, I think that there were about two that said eight-story. Regardless, I think, you know, I've gone on record that that building height should not be a popularity contest, it involves actual planning. In terms of the survey that was done a few weeks ago, it was not possible to enter duplicates. I looked at the raw data, I did some investigation on that. The slide of the survey, on the other hand, you can enter as many times as you want. Thank you.
Thank you, Fred. So we took our first four here, I want to check on, on Zoom, okay, there's, there's three on Zoom, okay, we'll take one more here and then move to the Zoom comments.
Okay, I have some items I'd like to pass out, if that's okay. I'm a little concerned, like Mr. Wise here, that our letters aren't getting in the agenda package, so, sorry. And this is from the North Coast Journal about the, the fire department and their problems with responding to fires right now, and that we, they don't even have a ladder truck, that you guys are going right ahead, steamrolling ahead, talking about six, seven, eight-story buildings, and, you know, I was for eight-story buildings when the plan first was proposed, because I was thinking on the lines of equity, and my mind got in a certain groove, and I thought, we can just trade affordable housing for more, for higher stories, you know, but I, I'm, right now, I've just totally done a 360-degree turn, and I think we need to start thinking about, somebody mentioned to me the wastewater treatment plant, and then I started thinking about a whole bunch of things, you know, like wetlands, how does it affect the ecology? How does it affect our wastewater treatment plant, the fire? There are so many issues and so many impacts, and I don't feel like you're getting, you're getting all the feedback you need, and that's why we need an advisory committee, and that's why we're asking for it, because even the community, community isn't getting this feedback, and we deserve, we deserve to know what the impacts are going to be, and we deserve to have answers, and that's why we want an advisory committee. Please reconsider that, and, sorry, I'm a little nervous today, but also, I think we are trying to get a survey together. That survey that you conducted with the Form-based Code, the August 16th meeting, that was a joke, that was like 30 to 50 people, you're not getting, you're not getting a cross-section of people, and you really need that, and so we're asking for that.
Another section at the end, okay, we're going to move to our Zoom comments here.
All right, our first online comment is James, go ahead, James.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can, it's a little echoey, so I'll turn it down a little.
Yeah, we had, we had two, we're down to one, thank you. And it's no surprise I'm going to speak to the L Street Corridor. The early December 21st release of the Gateway draft is when the community first began consideration of the future L Street Corridor and what its future represented. Since that point, it's become apparent through the, it's become apparent that the road will pave over open spaces. At this point, I wonder if community members were asked and informed, do you support the L Street Linear Park, enhancing a Class 1 trail through the intended purpose of rail banking, expanding its footprint, and by absorbing easements from the North Coast Rail Line, an easement that is in the hands of the Great Redwood Trail? The City of Yucayas already supported a community-backed linear park, along with its rail-banked Great Redwood Trail line. A linear park on L Street will preserve wetlands that are already identified by California Fish and Wildlife and active breeding frog habitats, or do you support a through road that will increase noise, congestion, and pave over open spaces? So much discussion has been about the Gateway infill will preserve open spaces in the forest in the bottom plan. The L Street Linear Park is the preservation of open spaces for the community that will grow in this future infill. Upon completion of the Great Redwood Trail, travel is where shared in appreciation for the Common Green Belt that will enhance Arcata as a whole. Through the actions of rail banking, the entire rail line from Alliance to Samoa Boulevard can become a blank slate for further possibilities for recreation and landscaping. I ask you to honor the intent of rail trails, not rail with trails, and definitely not rail the roads. Please honor the, honor second, the August 2nd recommendation of Transportation Safety Committee for the L Street Linear Park as a park that prioritizes people. Thank you.
Thank you, Jim. I feel like you time it and practice it, like right before, you're always right on time. Okay, thank you. Okay, on to the next comment.
Our next speaker is Duria, I hope I pronounced that right, go ahead.
Yes, you pronounced it right. Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Duria Sayad, and I'm an outreach analyst. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, because the timer did not go, so I was, you know, so, okay, my name is Duria Sayad, and I'm an outreach analyst for the Department of Insurance. I work in Community Relations and Outreach Branch, and I just wanted to give you an update on the work we have been doing on your behalf. It's a wildfire season, so I want to touch bases on that, that we have a safer-from-wildfire fires framework and inter-agency partnership between Insurance Commissioner Ricardo Lara and the Emergency Response and Readiness Agencies in Governor Gavin Newsom's administration, and its purpose is to protect lives and businesses by reducing wildfire risk. We are working with CAL FIRE, CAL OES, the Governor's Office of Planning and Research, and Public Utilities Commission. So just wanted to bring it up that it's a ground-up approach for wildfires, resilience approach has three layers. We call it SFW 123 Plan. Number one, protect the structures such as making sure your roof and vents are up to date. Number two, the surroundings such as brush too close to your home, or any flammable items stored under your deck, and number three is the community, involve your entire community to prevent wildfires from catching and spreading. And I have good news today, because it is today that Commissioner Lara submitted this insurance pricing regulation to the California Office of Administration Law, that would be recognized and reward wildfire safety and mitigation efforts made by homeowners. So basically, that's what it is, it will take 30 days and for the administrative law to determine whether the proposed regulation satisfied the requirements, and we are hoping that it will, the whole process will be done by 2023. I just wanted to come and tell you that I am your outreach analyst, any problem with auto insurance, homeowners' insurance, wildfire, any insurance problem that you or your constituents are having, we are here. We are so proud to tell you that we have live chat, and if we don't answer your call, our call that time is two minutes. Thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, our next speaker is call-in user two, go ahead, call-in user. Oh, you're still muted, can you unmute? Call-in user? Go ahead and unmute.
Hello, thank you, Zoom is not very user-friendly for our telephone. My name is Andy, and I'm just calling very briefly to tell the council that I'm calling to support and give my appreciation for Councilmember Watson. I believe that it takes a lot of courage to work through mental health issues, and while he's certainly made poor choices that have been well documented, the fact he's able to take steps needed for recovery and continue to take steps needed for recovery, and continue his duties in the city, and always working for the marginalized communities in Arcata, I believe is pretty admirable. And I just feel that it's important, and I felt it had to be said after last week's meeting, that Mr. Watson's past transgressions are constantly mentioned when he provides some relevant input to a council issue. And that's all, thank you for your time.
Okay, is that the last of our comments on Zoom? Okay, and I think that rounds out our 15 minutes as well. Okay, next we are going to go to the consent calendar.
I have a couple of quick comments, I'm a public comment. I'll keep it quick. Yeah, I just wanted to address Joanne's comments really quick about asking commenters to say their name. I believe that it's against the law to actually require people to do that, that's my understanding. So, and yeah, you know, I think it's mixed, you know, it is nice to be able to identify people, but, you know, I think we've seen a lot of times too, that we can, sometimes when people express.
I thought we weren't supposed to comment on people when they came and talked to us, that we didn't get into a dialogue and tell them information.
It's our choice, I'm not getting into a dialogue, I'm just making a comment, it's our choice.
I didn't think we could respond to them from the dais.
So, yeah.
I miss misunderstood, but I would think that was what we were told.
It does say in the text, I mean, that, you know, we can discuss, not discuss, but if there are any final comments or things that we would like to direct staff to put on a future agenda, we can make some quick comments.
Yeah, so, you know, I just, we have seen some examples of people expressing their opinion, and then, you know, they can sometimes get attacked by other people in the community. So, you know, for that reason, you know, I kind of do support the, just giving people the option, I guess, so they can kind of have that freedom and, you know, not have that fear of being able to express their opinions. Yeah, that was it, thanks.
On to item number eight, consent calendar. All items on the consent calendar are considered to be routine by the city council and are enacted in one motion, there is no separate discussion of any of these items. If discussion is required, the item may be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. At the end of the reading of the consent calendar, council members or members of the public can request that an item be removed for separate discussion. So, we will begin. Item A, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of August 3rd, 2022. Item B, approve the minutes of the city council meeting of August 17th, 2022. C, bi-weekly report on disbursements. D, declare a continuation of the local emergency related to the coronavirus pandemic. E, adopt resolution number 223-17, a resolution of the city council of the City of Arcata amending the class and pay resolution. International Union of Operating Engineers Local Number 3, to reflect new transit bus driver position and adjustment to maintenance worker salary ranges. F, award a contract in the amount of $714,917.16 to GHD Incorporated to provide a preliminary engineering and environmental services necessary for the Sunset Avenue and LK Wood Boulevard Improvement Project, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. G, approve the purchase of one 2023 Ford Police Interceptor and one 2023 Ford F-150 Lightning Truck for parks, and award a contract to National Auto Fleet Group in the amount of $111,854.64, including tax, and allocate an additional $4,649.17 from 771 Central Garage Fund to cover purchase costs, and authorize the city manager to execute all applicable documents. And finally, item H, approve an increase to the contract price for the city's purchase agreement with Golden Harvest Incorporated for fabricated slide gates and actuators in the amount of $10,339 to account for changes to the slide gates' specifications per the design engineer's recommendation. So would any council members like to remove an item from the consent calendar?
I'd just like to remove item D and F, please.
Are there any members of the public that wish to remove an item from the consent calendar? Or staff?
Nothing online?
Great, so can we get a motion on the consent calendar minus items D and F?
I would move to approve all items except for D and F on the consent calendar.
One second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Councilmember Stillman, and a second by Councilmember Matthews, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, motion passes unanimously, so we will begin with looking at item D, declare a continuation of the local emergency-related coronavirus pandemic. Councilmember Watson, you pulled, what do we got?
Yeah, so I just wanted to quickly comment, you know, I know part of this is making our meetings more accessible to the public via Zoomer in person, it says COVID modification, meetings may be accessed by the public via Zoomer in person, and, you know, maybe, you know, I did, maybe you all did as well, just got a fair amount of feedback about the study session we had with the planning committee. You know, I think a lot of people had the expectation, I mean, I would say reasonable expectation, that they'd be able to participate on Zoom or over the phone, so I think, you know, some people were disappointed about that. And then, you know, we were assured that there would be a audio recording of the meeting available, but I didn't actually hear the audio recording myself, but several people expressed, you know, their discontent that the audio recording was not very high-quality, it was hard to hear people, you know, I think it was just kind of taken, recorded on a staff member's phone on one side of the table, so people on the other side of the table, okay, oh, that's good, you can, feel free to give me feedback. So, just, you know, if in the future, and I get it, we have limited resources, you know, stuff like that, but yeah, if in the future, you know, whatever we can do to, to make, you know, the meeting more accessible, or at least, you know, clear recording later. And then somebody had even suggested, maybe, and I don't even know if, you know, makes sense, but to consider, you know, contracting with somebody maybe like Eric Black in the future, if our, you know, tech staff isn't available to record, somebody that's kind of already there making recordings. That's what I had on that item. Could you clarify, if you had more comments Karen?
Yeah, I know, it's just that the sound, you know, was a different format and style for us, all sitting around the table and trying to capture that. We did put out basically, I'll call it the Polycom, it's the, looks like a telephone without a handset, and then we did actually purchase two extension microphones to try to spread the, you know, the depth of that table, but it is just very hard between background noise, how amplified each speaker is to see how that would capture. So, I did listen to it, you know, most of it was certainly audible, however, it's hard and you can't see who's speaking to kind of put a name to a face, and so it was a challenging environment, but we'll continue to work to try to improve.
Thank you. And to add to Joanne's constant point, everybody needs to talk louder. We're up here, we're in public, let's talk louder so everybody can hear us too, especially when we're being recorded for these meetings at home, and everybody here, I mean, I think that's always important. Okay, do we want to move forward with item D, do we have a motion on that?
I'll move for approval of item D.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, and now moving to item F. Oh, yeah, yes, okay, do we have public comment on item D? That was pulled.
None online.
No public comment on item D, so we will move to item F.
Yeah, is it, is there like a picture available of this that we could just look at really quick? It was just hard for me to visualize it, I don't know if this has come up in the past. Is there a visual?
A visual of the proposed improvements, or the best area?
Yeah, just what we're talking about, I guess.
Projects just include the intersection of Sunset and LK Wood on the both sides, and Sunset and GNH improvements. So you want to see a picture of the area, we can put something on the screen.
Well, I guess, you know, it's just, it was hard for me to understand, because it was, you know, kind of, you know, surveys and more technical information, at least to me. So, yeah, I was just trying to get a clearer understanding of it, like a picture would have helped, and I guess just to clarify, like, that's kind of like a, I don't know if boundary is the right word, but where city and HSU jurisdiction kind of meet, and what part is whose? Does that make sense?
So, this scope of work is to complete the project approval and environmental document for the project, so we don't have the drawings for the future improvements, if that's what you're looking for. We will be analyzing that in this phase, and we will develop drawings that we could bring to you for review.
So, I would just like to ask a question, because I wasn't here for goal-setting and for a budget approval. So was this part of goal-setting and part of budget approval? Okay, well you should know about that then, I would think, that would have, for all of us, not for me, but for the rest of you on the council, would be able to understand, when these items are coming in on our agenda for consent calendar, they've already been something that have gone through goal-setting, and they've gone through the budget process, and finally now they're able to pull it together and have it come forward to us. And so, I know you ask questions about these each time, and I keep thinking, weren't you at goal-setting, and weren't you at budget? I know I wasn't, but.
And just to add to, you know, we all know where Sunset and LK Wood is, we all know that's a horrible intersection, I think that was a goal of the council, this is just the preliminary engineering to say, we're going to fix that, let's find out what it looks like, let's work with, you know, we're hiring GHD to do it, and, you know, moving forward with that, and then eventually we'll see those specific, you know, project pictures like Netra alluded to.
Yeah, and I just appreciate to have the space to ask any questions I want, as often as I need to. You know, I feel like that's pretty reasonable, I feel like I'm entitled to that as a city council member, you know, representing my constituents, I just continuously, you know, we go through a lot of information, and, you know, it is pretty well-known that I, you know, do suffer from attention deficit disorder, which memory is part of that, and I've talked with you about that Alex, and I've sent you links about it.
Well, you've told me personally, but that's not something that I would know of from another city.
GHD, let's go to a motion please, thank you.
I move for approval of item F. Go for approval of item F.
Yeah, I don't understand what we're doing, and I'm just, I thought I was being pretty reasonable, I'm just really asking to get a clearer picture of what's going on.
You know, you want to take a break, and we can go out and talk about it?
Sorry, I thought you were a little clear after what I said, but, right, I mean, we're talking corner, LK Wood, Sunset, where it all comes in, this is the preliminary, moving forward to have an engineering study of what we are going to eventually make improvements to pedestrian bike roadway.
I second Alex's motion.
Okay, I still have questions, that I feel like aren't being answered. Do you need more from me? I mean, could, would you please help me have a clearer understanding of this project?
So, the scope of work includes to prepare the environmental documents, that will help us to complete the final design. And the environmental document includes doing the survey, doing the initial design, looking where the right-of-way lines are, and coming up with the design. So that's what we are hiring GHD to do, and since most of the project is in Caltrans right-of-way, and we will be working very closely with Caltrans and CalPoly Humboldt, so there will be a lot of coordination involved in the project. So, we are not proposing any design at this time, this is just to finish the Phase 1, I we call it, in the design work is, this is just to complete the environmental document. Yes, it does sound like a lot of money, but it does include a lot of technical studies that's required for the project, and this is in the Caltrans on state highway system, so it needs additional technical documentation for their standards, hence, there's a lot of scope of work involved in here.
Okay, so I guess, you know, kind of where I was coming from is, yeah, it's $715,000, so for it to just, you know, I don't see where it's, you know, specifying, you know, this study costs this much, this study costs this much, it's just kind of this lump sum, with, you know, followed by, you know, technical information.
We did receive itemized cost, it was not included in the staff report, but for all those tasks, we have itemized cost also from GHD, for each task that listed in the scope of work.
Normally we do include that in the staff report, right? So I think that's why I'm confused.
Was that, sorry?
Normally, I feel like normally we do, so that's just why I was confused.
Yeah, no, I think normally you would see multiple bids, but for this project, we only received one bid. So you do normally see multiple costs, because you see the comparison of the bidders, but in this case, we only received one bid.
So if it's available, could, you know, we please, in the future, just receive the itemized?
Yes, definitely, and we can even send via email after the meeting, okay.
Thank you very much, I move to approve the item.
Great, okay, so we had a motion and a second from Councilmember Stillman and Councilmember Matthews, we do need to take public comment, is there anybody that would like to comment on item F, in person or online?
No one online.
Okay, so, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you folks. Okay, with that, we move on from the items of the consent calendar to item 10, which is old business. And so, A, under old business is to review and make a determination on the request from Arcane Artists Incorporated to continue to extend the ending time past 10:00 PM for their 2022 Arcane Summer Fundraiser Series, and can we have a staff report from City Manager Deemer, please?
Yes, thank you. So this item has come back before you, this event, Arcane Artists had proposed a series of summer fundraising concerts to benefit the promotion of local artists, and all of them were scheduled on N Street between 8th and 9th Street, and you'll recall that originally I approved their first event with an ending time of 10 o'clock, to kind of get a lay of the land and figure out how the space would work, and then the promoter came to the council to request a later timeframe. They have subsequently held two additional events. The first one, after the council's approval, to have events that would play amplified sound until midnight, and then non-amplified or silent disco until 1 o'clock, but the first concert they held after that approval, they did end the music at 11:30, and then the second concert, they ended the music at midnight. On the first event, dispatch did receive two calls of complaints, we spoke with both of those callers, and they were general noise complaints, had a hard time sleeping. On the second event, I saw a couple of emails that came into the council, dispatch received eight calls that evening, again, tried to respond to each of those calls, I think I reached five of the eight, and the general sense was the noise complaint associated with the concert itself. So, and I, and several of you received those complaints as well, and requested that this item be brought back before the council for consideration. The event promoter is here this evening to answer any questions, and also submitted some kind of late blue folder correspondence that we also printed to have before you tonight. Can I ask a quick clarifying question? That first event with the noise complaints, wasn't there another event going on at the same time? There was, the first event after the council's approval of the later end time, there was also a private event that was held at the pub, and they had an outdoor DJ that night, and I would say, having been on-site sort of between 9 and, you know, a little after 11, 11:30 that evening, the music from the pub was pretty much exclusively heard, I'll say east of the pub, and then if you were west of the pub, you know, you would have been influenced by the N Street concert. The outdoor music at the pub ended about 10:40 that night, on that first one. And then during the second one, they did not have a competing outdoor concert event, so that was good for the neighborhood that night. I'd love to hear from Joe.
Yeah, I think it would be helpful, Joe, if you just wanted to go over kind of this information that you presented to us, and just, you know, to hear the report of how it went in relation to what we have heard from the public as well, so, thank you.
Good evening, council members and staff, thank you for, again, bringing us forward to talk about these outdoor events. And, I guess, in summary of what has happened over the past two, after the first time that we came before you, we had a very positive response from, of course, event attendees. We had two direct contacts to me after the first event, or during the first event, from residences in the nearby neighborhood. They had basically said that the noise was a little too loud for them, so at which time, around 10:45, we turned the sound system down a little bit, which was during the headliner set. Of course, the artist didn't like that as much, but we wanted to try and appease the neighbors that were in the area. So that was kind of the only response that I had received directly from the neighborhood. They all have my phone number, at least, as many of the ones that we canvassed have my personal number, and I've also told Karen that she's free to give out my phone number to anybody who reaches out to her, or you guys as well. So that's kind of like the negatives that I've heard so far from the events. The positives, of course, we've had an immense amount of artists coming to the area, we have 80 local artists that were supported by these events, we've created 24 new part-time job positions due to these events, which is awesome. We also have four full-time positions now available due to these events going later in the revenue generation. If you want, I can run down some of these statistics with you, now that we've been able to gather some data from these last two events, if you'd like me to do that. Yeah, okay. So, in terms of guest arrival times, and in correlation to the request of the extension of the hours, so by 8:00 PM over the last two events, we've had about 15% of attendees arrive, so that's a pretty low number by 8:00 PM. By 9:00 PM, we had just under 30% had arrived, still a little bit low even at 9:00 PM. By 11:00 PM, we've had 80% of the total capacity arrive, and then by 12:00 PM, about 98%, there's still a couple stragglers that came in right after that. The highest revenue hours that we've seen at the last two events were between 10:00 and 11:30 PM, grossing 40% of the entire event's revenue. We also have some noise monitoring, both at 10th Street, kind of by Ironside Metal there, and then also by, close to the pub up on 8th Street. The decibel readings that were taken at 10:00 PM over on 10th Street, which is about a block and a half from the stage itself, were between 24 and 28 decibels. Over on the 8th Street side, which is more of the walking side of the event, which is where the main entrance to the event is held, they were 25 to 29 decibels, and that was at 10:10 PM, and it seemed to be affected mostly when people were walking and talking near the actual receiver. The feedback that we have received from the neighbors after the event, the closest single-family home, they have two children under the age of two, and it's located at the corner of 10th and N Streets. They reached out to me right after the event on Sunday morning, and they told me that it was a really cool and they told me that it was a really cool event. Her husband actually went and checked it out for a moment. And then they have their kids that were able to sleep through it. So that is something that we were grateful to hear. I know that that's not in line with all of the community as well, though I know some of the sound travels in different ways, and we want to be able to address that. So I do have some, a couple things a little bit later here that I wanted to talk about, ways that we think we could address that. The Arcata staff recreation member, one of them was there. They said that the event was well-run and that the sound seemed to be at acceptable levels. I talked with two APD officers on site that were down at the event, and they said that they received some noise complaints. They said eight. And that approaching the event, the sound wasn't noticeable until past the pub on 9th Street, is what they told me. So, that's something we wanted to take into account as well when we were deciding what we want to bring forward to you guys as a possible solution for this. And we kind of came up with a couple different things that maybe would be acceptable to the community in addressing the noise complaints. We would suggest to remove the silent disco portion of the event completely to encourage an earlier end time and people to leave the event more readily. We also partnered with the jam for after-parties so that there is a free entry for all event attendees to go to the jam directly from the event to encourage no loitering or excessive noise in the area. We also are suggesting a turn-down of the music at 20% from 11:30 to midnight. So that's 20% of the entire decibel reading right next to the stage to give it a little bit more of a quiet ending to encourage other people to leave. And if necessary, we'd also do a last call earlier. 11:30 would be kind of a nice last call, and people will be finishing their drinks and heading out naturally a little earlier so that we wouldn't have any of those late, late-night people gathering outside. I also want to touch on some further considerations that we want to bring to you guys. People are coming from all over, you know, larger cities right now, especially students to Cal Poly. And we're looking to create memories. And a lot of these people have talked about that and how much fun they're having. And of course, you know, the smiles all around. And there's not a lot of places to do that. And to my knowledge, I don't think there's anything that's quite this unique in this community, outdoor events, especially during the, you know, the nicer weather. And we are asking, of course, for that end time to continue. Nothing brands commerce and return loyalty to this area like nostalgia. And I think that the last council meeting, we appeared before you, and you heard from event attendees, artists, other businesses, and staff alike, and how much we're bringing here to the community and offering this type of experience. We would like to continue to be a part of why people go abroad and tell their families, friends, and acquaintances about the time they're having here and why they love where they live. And I think that creating those memories is really important here. Also, having these vendors, we have so many vendors out there, and they're all getting to do that for free. And that's a lot of exposure for local business, new businesses, and they're trying to launch their platforms. And I think that this is a great opportunity for recognition for them as well. Do you guys have any other, any questions for me right now?
Does anybody have any direct questions for Joe now? And then I think we should open it up for public comment before we begin our discussion of this. But if anybody has any direct questions for Joe, now is the time for that.
It seemed like in some of the correspondence I received supporting it, there was a focus on, you know, keeping it later being a positive thing for the students and, you know, the importance of that. And it just put the idea in my head, you know, that I wondered if this would be a good opportunity for the community to partner with Cal Poly Humboldt and perhaps, you know, hold the event on campus. You'd have a very, you know, targeted market there.
We've actually looked at doing that with the campus in a partnership, and we decided to forego that and stay within the community. I think that the location that we have identified is actually, from an aerial view, the best location within city limits. And a lot of the attendees we have are actually not students. We run these summer concert series, and most of the time when we actually do them during the summertime, there aren't a lot of students around. So, yes, we're continuing into the fall and these nicer summer months because we got a late start this year. And most of the people that do attend are actually not students. But we are trying to reach that market and have them also be a part of these shows.
And then I was also wondering, do you feel like, since it's advertised as going to a later hour, that, you know, it allows people to show up later? And that maybe if it was advertised to going, you know, let's just say till 10:00, that that would encourage people to get there sooner to be able to enjoy it?
So, actually, we've seen a 35% growth in the ticket sales alone since the first event. And I think that the first event was also very well-advertised. And I think that part of that is that later end time and people feeling more comfortable to come to the events, knowing that they are basically two shows for the price of one because they're allowed then to go to the jam after party for those later night people that want to actually go out and enjoy their till 2:00 a.m. experience or whatever they'd like to do. And so I think that's a big factor in allowing, in being able to have these events succeed is having that partnership with another later-going place.
Yeah, I think that you had mentioned that the reason that it was important to go after 10:00 was that was when a lot of the service industry gets off of work, which I completely empathize with. So, I like the idea, and I'm definitely interested in public comment, I like the idea of, you know, foregoing the silent disco. I think that's great that you have a partnership with the jam. I would suggest, instead of turning the volume down 20% at 11:30, would it be, would you be comfortable sliding it back to turning the volume down at 11:00? And then?
I personally am completely comfortable with that. The people that would have something more to say, the acts that we're booking, normally a headline act that we would book, which costs, of course, quite a bit of money to bring in from out of the area. Their agents are the people that I have to work with. And what, and some of them require certain, certain levels of sound be above previous artists. So to turn it down during that headliner position would potentially be troublesome. And the reason I said maybe 11:30 is what I was asking for, is we can end the headliner at 11:30 and then bring somebody kind of like a close-out artist to sort of help people exit the event for that little bit of time.
So, having the headliner at the jam is?
It would definitely be counterproductive to have the headliner at the jam when we would be, essentially, we're paying for that over there. So, we would be losing a lot, and you'd potentially see these events stop completely.
Alex had a question.
So, one of the complaints I had, and I understand, is that hard bass. And you hear people driving through town with their cars and their windows open. You hear them thump, thump, thump.
Yes.
And that was a couple neighbors in that vicinity. I asked them just to let me know how things were going. And that was one of the comments they made is the bass is really hard and deep. And one of them went over to check it out. He's a musician himself.
Okay.
And so, I think that probably is a disturbing factor. Or it is in cars, and I know it is in music, too. But it's something that people like to play.
One potential mitigating factor we could implement to avoid that. Normally, we set the cabinet, the sub-cabinets, on the ground. And that does help things, of course, travel. You can feel more of it. And if people are feeling that in their homes, which from my walking, I wasn't aware of that portion, but we could lift them.
I don't know if it's in their home, but it's that deep beat that travels.
Right. We could lift the cabinet off the ground so it wouldn't impact it as much the way that the sound travels.
Karen, do you have times that the calls were made?
Yeah, well, I may not be down to the minute, but I think that our, the, let's just go to the last event when we received eight calls. I think the first one came in at about 10:30, 10:40. Joe, you and I went through this, and then the last one came in right about 11:45.
Yeah, was what you said, yeah.
Yeah, I don't think we got anything before 10:30, maybe 10:23, but that was the first.
Okay, if nobody has any specific questions for Joe, I think we should take public comment, and then we can come back and have a discussion about this.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we are open for public comment. You'll have three minutes. And, yeah, there's somebody waiting. So line up if you are ready and then come forward to the podium, and you can begin your three minutes. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Catherine Waichell, and I have a copy. I drafted a letter that I can provide for you. You're welcome. I live in the Greenview neighborhood, and I have a home-based business there. Lived on Villaway for 16 years. And the gist of the letter, I won't read every bit of it, but it's regarding this particular agenda item. It says, "I do not want the council to allow amplified sound past 10:00 p.m. for the special event permit for this said event." The last paragraph says, "The Creamery District is located southeast adjacent to established, single-family residential Greenview neighborhood, which includes working families, young children, and elderly residents. Loud amplified sound past 10:00 p.m. disregards the rights of the community members who live, work, and contribute to the neighborhood and to Arcata." These are signatures from my neighbors and friends that live on Villaway. And I was able to take a good portion of today off from my business to do this because it's important to me. It's important to my kids to have a regular, established routine, which includes going to bed approximately by 11:00 at night and getting up at a reasonable hour. I think that it sets an incorrect precedence for this type of outside activity past 10:00 in an established residential neighborhood with people that have roots. We're talking the people here that have signed this. They are young families that have moved to Arcata to try to continue the integrity of the neighborhood, of kids growing up on that street. There's a retired teacher that's legally blind, that already has trouble sleeping at night. There's a retired custodian that worked for the school systems for 30 years and above. They go to Church, St. Mary's Church, on Sundays. By having to be forced to stay up till 1:00 to accommodate, completely disregards the integrity of the community. Thank you.
Hi, I'm not afraid to say that my name is Joanne McGary, and I live in the neighborhood where these concerts happen. And it just so happens I've been away from that neighborhood on the nights of those concerts, so I haven't personally experienced the noise. As I suggested before, my main concern is more about the after-party noise on the streets and people getting into cars unsafely and the like. But I do want to let you know that the night of the lantern ceremony, which is when one of those events occurred, before the lantern ceremony I walked to, I spoke to somebody at the concert and explained to them that we were having this rather quiet, solemn ceremony out at the marsh, and that I was concerned if the noise traveled, you know, it would sort of disrupt the feel of the lantern ceremony. And so this gentleman gave me his number and said, "You call me if you're hearing us" at the lantern ceremony. So they were very, very attentive to that particular issue, that particular night. And it did not occur, as far as I could hear, at the lantern ceremony. And so I did not need to call. But I just want you to know that I very much appreciate they're very responsive to the needs of the neighbors and others in the community in regards to things like that. So, I hope to, at some point, be in the neighborhood overnight when the concerts are happening. I won't be there this weekend either. But I think we should experiment a little bit with this and see how it goes and revisit in the next season. So, thank you.
I would like to address this from the standpoint of the engineering of it because, you know, you have two groups, one that wants to have fun, entertainment. That seems to be where the city's heading with the Gateway Project with an entertainment district and arts. So, this is like a learning experience for that. I almost feel like I'm the only one that's lived in high-rises and been in this environment. So, the way you do it is that you have a business district where you can, you know, outdoor activities is very important, and you even have that in the Gateway Plan. But unfortunately, you're putting that right under high-rises. And so, my advice is, you're going to have a lot of conflict in the future, and that's going to be really a disaster from that standpoint. So, my advice is, what a lot of cities have done is a business district. They have outdoor areas, they have a place for, you know, bands and young people to go that is going to create an environment that isn't going to be a conflict with a residential area. And I think this is where you need to go. So, unfortunately, that's not in your plan. And I would also state that The New York Times addressed this in the last week from the standpoint, because of COVID, there was a lot of outdoor restaurants that were set up on the sidewalk with music. And they reported that the residents above these restaurants that have the sidewalk entertainment, there are a number of lawsuits from these residents going after the restaurants and the city because of this issue. So, you really need to plan for this in the future. I guess this is what we call a learning experience from, you know, trying to work with the entertainment aspect and then also, I guess, learning from the residents' perspective. So, I don't know what to say because this is going to be a constant problem because in the future, because we're going to have, you know, thousands of more people in town, and it really needs to be thought well, planned well, and engineered. Otherwise, we're heading down to a lot of problems. Thanks.
I just wanted to talk about this from a community standpoint as well. I know that we have a very well-rounded community here in Arcata. That includes retired community artists and everything. And I just wanted to remind us of what the representative from Playhouse said when they spoke earlier, that it's wonderful, we have these amazing artists that come in and they improve our cities, but then we don't look after them, and we don't pay attention when, you know, a job with 80, that helps 80 artists and has 24 part-time jobs is on the table. So I just wanted to remind us of that, that it's great to benefit from these artists, but it's also really good to take care of them. And we should definitely do that with this motion that we're thinking of. Thanks.
Hi, I'm actually, wasn't here tonight to comment on this, but since this is here, it just came up when I'm sitting here, I wanted to speak as a resident in the community who lives the closest to the music. My family of five, with a one-year-old baby, was totally able to sleep, and it didn't bother any of us. For the baby, we just put him on the other end of the house. And all of us who slept on the closest end of the house to the music were able to sleep. Something that we do like to sleep with normally is ocean sounds, just every day, whether or not there's something going on outside, and it totally was comfortable for us. I also do agree with Joanna, a neighbor, that the manager, director, head of the event has always been really kind about knocking on the door, making himself available, and has said the same thing, "You call me if it's too loud." And my biggest concern is the same as Joanna's, more just the safety of folks leaving inebriated a little bit later. And he's been really responsive about anything we could do to support that. In the past, there have been events right behind us with the Halyashi-adjacent property, where they've had events going on till midnight, and we have slept just fine with our small children behind it. For what it's worth, we're the closest. I just wanted to speak on behalf of our experience. And I want to support the artists in our community. And there is kind of a large homeless problem that migrates along our street. And as a resident that is affected by that every day, I'm actually thankful that they're going to be bringing in music and artists and people who are there to celebrate and support the community versus having different traffic that's a little bit difficult for a family to have, neighboring you all the time. So I'm very excited about it. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. I was here last time, and I wanted to come again.
I was here last time and I wanted to come again and speak as a community member, but also as a member of Arcane Artists and a member of the dance team. I've lived here for a couple of years and I've worked full-time in Old Town Erika. And I've gone to school, but I have not found something like Arcane Artists that really gives me happiness and excitement and it's also financially supported me a lot. And like, I don't think I would be where I'm at without them. And I do believe that there is a compromise to be met with the other community members and the complaints with noise. But I also think there's a compromise to be met for these artists, for these 80 jobs, for these people coming out of the area and for all the traffic it's bringing in a good way and all the money and revenue it's producing and letting us continue to bring this excitement and enjoyment to other people and inspire people. And like, it's really inspired me and even inspired me to go back to school for this sort of things. People in school want to be a part of this. It's really building something for all of this young community and for the older communities. So I really do think that it's worth reaching a compromise to make sure all the neighbors feel listened to and are not disturbed, but that artists continue to make an impact on this community and feel heard and feel taken care of. I think it's definitely what Arcata is about, you know? So, thank you.
Hi, I'm Joanna, I work with Arcane. I just want to go real quick, but I want to point out a couple of things. One, obviously, we understand in a community you always have to make compromises. And we take pride in the fact that we represent a very diverse group of people and to do that, you have to compromise with each other. And, you know, big ears and small mouths, you know, we like to hear everybody's input and we're not trying to bully our way into anything. We want everyone to enjoy themselves and we understand that some people aren't necessarily going to enjoy themselves, but we don't want them to feel inconvenienced about it. And so we are open to compromise. I feel like every single one of these events we've done, we've gotten better and we've opened up more people to the ideas. And so that's what we're continuing to try to do and we'd like to have the opportunity to do that. Thank you.
I don't know if it's appropriate to have another turn.
Yeah, no, everybody gets three minutes. We don't really allow the back and forth between our commenters. So we're going to go to Zoom now for our Zoom comments if there's nobody else who has not spoken already in person that would like to speak. Okay.
All right, our first online comment is a call-in speaker. Go ahead, Colin. Can you unmute call-in speaker ending in 24? Give it one more try. Call-in speaker ending in 24. All right, we will come back to you, hold tight. Our first call-in speaker will be Patricia. Go ahead, Patricia.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, so I spoke the last time when it was brought up to council to make the decision whether you should go to 1:30 or I know Karen Deemer suggested to start out at 11 o'clock and push towards, and then do those two next trial runs on the events and see if it should be going later than that. So my question, one of my questions is, is it going to be going past 11 o'clock from, or I guess you voted on 12. So is it going to be going past 12 o'clock to the original 1:30 that they were requesting it being extended out to? So, and I also want to thank Karen. She got back to me after the August 6th event, knowing that I had some concerns. And to be honest, for me and our house, it wasn't that bad on August 6th. I know you had a couple complaints and I think the people west from us definitely get more of the brunt. There's also, it was outcompeted by the pub event that ended around 10:30 that night. So it was really kind of hard to tell. I can tell you on the event of the 27th, Alex is right, that base was super more prevalent than the concert before. And I have never been, I know Brett reached out because of, after that concert, wanting to know what my feeling was on it. And at that point, you know, I wasn't going to speak because I didn't really feel like I would be heard, but I think I needed to voice up, especially for the people that are west from us in that neighborhood. I know they got the brunt of it and I've talked to people that live out there and it was definitely really disturbing for them. I have to say the after-hour party of everybody dispersing was very disruptive on that same concert on the 27th. So I just really, I guess, you know, I guess maybe I just need you to, you know, I request that before you make the decisions and allow, you know, the next five concerts to go on, it sounds like they have plans to go next summer, starting earlier. I ask you, when you make these votes, think of your loved ones and your family, your grandparents, your best friends, you know, the first responders that live in that area. And how would you vote if those people, you know, that you know and love live there? And let me gently remind you that you are responsible for the well-being of all of Arcata neighborhoods and the citizens and the citizens. And, you know, you have to do this to the best of your ability.
Okay, thank you, Patricia. Patricia, that is your three minutes, so sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, we have no more online communication.
Okay, so that is our public comment. So what do we think, folks? I'll open it up to council discussion.
Well, I think Joe should give Catherine his phone number. She's right back there for one thing. So that would be, I'm sure she would appreciate it and you would too, so thank you.
And for me, I'm just, and I'm no sound engineer, I don't know how sound travels because I live, you know, much closer to these events than, you know, the Greenview neighborhood and Villaway, as the crow flies. But, you know, I am eastward, so maybe, I don't know. And this is a question for Joe, I don't know, which direction your speakers face and how that impacts this. Because I know that, like, me being east, but still within, you know, a two to three block, three-block radius, I think, you know, I didn't hear much. And I had to even think, "What's that, what's that nice little music I hear? Oh yeah, something's happening." You know, I had to re-remember that it was going on. So I just wonder, I mean, and I guess maybe come back up the mic because I'm asking you a question, but, I mean, what is the positioning of the speakers and how does that, I mean, impact how sound travels? I'm sure that you guys have done a lot more research on that.
Yes.
And then also my other secondary question, which might be for you or maybe, I'll wait. But just about, I don't know, these decimal readings don't really mean anything to me because I don't know what is, like, normally allowed. So I just, just a clarification on that as well.
So the stage is positioned, I think, if you guys have the diagram originally, it's south-facing on N Street. And we have proposed putting basically a massive 26-foot truck behind it. The way that sound travels, there is that fence along the southeast side? Is that right? Southeast, southwest, right, the southwest side. And that doesn't really do a lot of absorption, sound absorption. The other option is to reposition the stage. We could do that and face it against, more towards the building. So instead of angling it straight along N Street, which is what we have been doing, we could angle it to where it's facing at an angle more towards the fence on the southwest side and have it hit the building directly. There will still be some bounce back from the sound, like hitting the building, but there will also be more absorption in terms of, like, there's vendor booths over there and there's a lot of people, of course, in the later hours, there are more people and that helps with sound absorption. We also don't fly our speakers, so that helps with not having the sound travel too far. In terms of the bass, which was mentioned earlier, I definitely think we could potentially even turn that down further. Most of the music that we play is not bass-heavy music. When we submitted the requests originally to the council, we basically stipulated the types of music that were kind of not going to be played. And heavy bass, rock and roll, like big hip-hop acts, things like that, which kind of are more disruptive in nature or considered more on the noise side of things, if you will, we decided to avoid entirely because we knew we were outside and we're next to neighbors. And so we want the music that is being played to be more on the uplifting side, where people feel good about the music and not so much that deep bass feel. So definitely taking that into account for the future shows, I think, would be great. We can turn that down further.
Just following up on that, so you're having live music and then do you have, I'm going to use the word can, but that means, you know, DJ. Do you have DJ music and is that, after you have your live concert, you go to DJ?
That's correct.
Maybe that's where your bass is hitting.
And I think that that could be. And the types of music that the DJs play is what, we're very kind of particular on that. Mostly, like I said, because having certain types of music, like, that have more of the bass element, we don't put those acts on out there, we save those for the jam so that it's a little more indoors and retained over there because it is, it's naturally more disruptive that we found to certain people.
So what time does the headliner usually start to start?
Well, we could start him earlier. The headliner, some artists that we have lined up require to be the last act playing on the stage, the bigger ones, and so that's going to be a little hard to work through. We could do that and then have the exit music for like 30 minutes, but having them too early, early, early would be something that they wouldn't be agreeable to, which is sad, but...
Yeah, how long do they usually play?
One hour to one and a half hours, depending on the set times of which artist that we're bringing in.
Yeah, I mean, I'm just thinking that now that it's, we're heading into fall and it's getting darker earlier, that might be nicer that I know that, yeah.
You may want everything to happen earlier because it's getting dark earlier, but when they talked to us originally, they were looking at employees getting off later and then we wanted the employees to be able to have an opportunity to come.
That's correct.
I just see in the packet, there's just a major special event permit for July 23rd. Do we have to have that permit for the other days as well?
Yeah, he does have a permit for each of those days, the one that was in your packet. I just utilized, you know, basically the same staff report.
Just an example of what it was.
The initial one that I had, but they all, it looked identical, he had all of the dates listed on it. And so their dates requested, still moving into the future, are September 10th, so this weekend, September 24th, August, or October 8th, 15th, and 29th are the remaining dates on the current permit. And then he handles the liquor license sort of one show at a time.
Yes.
And he comes in and gets those signed for each show.
And then as part of the permit application, is it required for the applicant to show, you know, like a layout of the stage and things like that? How are things going to be oriented?
Yes, if there were to be changes, you've got in your packet on page 116 the initial layout that they had, that they've submitted to us.
So I was just going to ask another question. So your headliner plays from when to when?
Currently, the way it's set up, they would play 10:30 until midnight. We could push them to play 10 to 11:30 or in that realm to help with the exodus of people and then to bring the volume down a little bit, is what we had initially proposed here in the solutions to helping with the noise later. Most of the time, a headliner wouldn't be agreeable to play before 10:00 p.m. that you're bringing in, like a bigger-name act.
So if your headliner plays from, until 11:30, what happens after 11:30? Is that your DJ?
So the headliner, in most cases, would be a musical act that are, the type of music that we put on in the evening hour, the later night hours, is going to be in some form of manipulated music. So they're going to have some element where they either have a looping track or CDJs or things like that, so where they can manipulate the sound. So it's not just like a regular band, you're not going to hear those hi-hats and other things you would hear with a normal band setup. So sometimes they're DJs and sometimes they are more live singers with components of, I guess, a DJ for lack of a better word.
Can I just add too? I mean, I feel like a lot of people are like, "It's just a DJ, it's not music, like, it's not even a real band." But, I mean, the technical expertise that goes into being a professional DJ and being able to use loop tracks like that and do, you know, that is a real performance that somebody is putting on. Just a reminder, so, I mean, I know most of your headline tracks are probably EDM, you know, electronic music artists, which again, that scene is incredibly popular and incredibly has grown a lot here locally too. And so just, I don't know, the reminder that though it's like not a live band and maybe you don't think it's music, to like a lot of people in this community, like, those DJ acts are like really, like, what they want to see.
I wasn't put, I was just trying to understand because you were saying that after your headliner, which could be a DJ, that then you're going to another kind of music to disperse people or whatever you're doing to disperse people so they can go home.
And that would be more of a quiet downtempo, more like a melodic house, the type of music, if we're being specific, to help people exit because after you have that higher energy set, which is generally going to be your headliner, people, when you play something more downtempo, naturally people kind of want to gravitate towards something else because it's sort of like playing closing time at a bar, you know?
Last call. Okay, so let's get down to brass tacks. What are we comfortable with here? Let's hear it, let's get there.
So another question I have is, can we just get like a rough idea how far away Villaway is from this? Is it like a couple blocks, is it 1,000 feet? Because it seems like it's a little bit of a distance.
You have several streets, where you get on 11th Street and you're going down there on N and then you go, they're past Q. And then you turn on Villaway, it's one of the last streets before you get onto Janes.
Yeah.
I would have to...
So it's okay, Karen, that's okay. I think I got it, just, it's a few blocks, sounds like, okay, cool. Yeah, so I guess, you know, for me, getting down to brass tacks, you know, we have some complaints from people in the immediate community or in the immediate area and then, you know, we have this letter that Catherine took time to put together, which I appreciate. And she also took the time to collect signatures from her neighbors from Villaway, which is, you know, significant distance away. I don't think it was maybe the distance all of us were thinking about when we approved this. And so, you know, just to be, you know, like you said, get down to brass tacks and to be black and white about it, I mean, to me, it's a real simple question, right? What do we prioritize as the council? Is it the, you know, we were talking about how, what are the benefits of this? It's creating entertainment for the community workers. It's also, you know, a financial gain for some of the people participating. And then on the other side of that, we have, you know, longtime residents, families. And so how do we find that balance? And, you know, for me, and it's, you know, I'm an entrepreneur, I get business. But at the end of the day, you know, I always feel like we need to prioritize residents and families because I feel like that, to me, is Arcata and the, you know, community that, you know, people love and live here for. So, you know, I want to be able to find a compromise. I like some of the stuff I'm hearing about, can we change the stage and stuff like that? You know, I would like to see a new plan with some of these changes implemented. You know, maybe if it's, you know, some way we can do some sound testing before another event, you know, stuff like that. But until then, you know, I'd like, I feel like the best. And then also acknowledging the fact that once the event does stop, that there is still, you know, kind of commotion and disturbance in the neighborhoods when people are dispersing from the event. Go ahead.
Sure, so to just touch on a couple of the points you just made, we have made arrangements for people that are in the immediate area or disrupted by these events to be able to reach out and for us to have accommodations for them for the evenings of those events so that if they are that disrupted while they're sleeping, that we can relocate them for the evening to a very nice hotel to be able to, so that they can, you know, still have their peace. And these events aren't scheduled every night, they're once, you know, basically every other week. And it is providing a great opportunity for artists and... And it is, is providing a great opportunity for artists and the amount of jobs that are being created that would be absolved due to lack of revenue is also something to note. And then in terms of the part where people are leaving, we do provide those guards that walk into the neighborhoods along the streets to be able to usher people along. And we do remind people on the mic before they're leaving to be respectful of the neighbors. Sometimes that doesn't happen, you know, but we are also conscious of over-serving, which is when people are going to be more prone to being disruptive in the neighborhoods is when they're leaving and they've been intoxicated or something like that. So we do put a lot of effort into helping those people along. We kind of push them towards the jam now, naturally. And that usually happens, you know, before midnight if people have left and at the last event, it was pretty well cleared out by midnight, actually.
Yeah, just, you know, also to be clear, I mean, I absolutely commend you for putting this all together. I mean, I know, you know, I've been a part of event planning in the past and it's a lot of work, bringing all the pieces together, making it all fit together. You know, it's definitely a lot of work and you have, it sounds like, you know, made a big effort to reach out to the community and you're here now and you're, you know, willing to work and try to problem solve and stuff. So, yeah, my opinion right now is, yeah, if I was going to wave a magic wand and do this, you know, how I thought it should be done, you know, we bring this back at the next council meeting. Between now and then, you know, you do your best to come up with a new layout, you know, some of your new suggestions. And it also gives you an opportunity, another couple of weeks, to, you know, go back through some of these neighborhoods and residences and talk with them. And, but, you know, I do feel like that my, right now, my gut is, is that, you know, until we can find some, you know, solutions that we're confident in, that's going to, you know, protect our, our families and our residents, I, with the, you know, acknowledging that it takes time for these crowds to disperse, you know, maybe up to another half hour or so. You know, if the event ends at 10, it won't be over till 10:30 essentially. So my personal feeling right now is that we should leave it at, go back to, you know, what it was, 10:00 PM until we can find accommodations for the community.
Well, I see you only have five more. That's it.
That's it.
And they're not every, they're not every weekend.
No, and they're only on Saturday nights.
And that is exactly why we have a person sitting behind you that isn't making them because she does not here every weekend. So I'm thinking that I, if you could figure out how to stop at 11:30.
We can do that.
I think that, that could work.
Okay.
And then send people to the pub or to Jambalaya or to Everett's or.
Yeah, I, I think, you know, to be able to have a last call, cut it off and turn it down at 11 and encourage people to leave to go to the jam.
Okay.
I will add, and I think I shared this with you, I am subject to the foot traffic. I own the superhighway between the pub and the plaza and that I honestly didn't notice too much more craziness than a normal bar-going night on nights of the events. Maybe more people take 8th Street, I don't know. But just, just to throw that in there, but to be able, I'm just thinking the way to make your headlining, you know, acts be able to work. But I think, you know, and I don't work with promoters, but 11:00 PM is pretty late, you know, and, and I think that, you know, a headliner, if you give them the amount of time that they want to play to go to then and then encourage the event to move, you know, to the jam, is a pretty solid plan. And then to continue like we spoke before, I mean, we brought it back because a couple of us were wanting to talk about it a little bit more again and we did get some complaints. But maybe in the future, though, we had discussed that, you know, with Karen, that the mayor and I could, you know, decide, okay, 11 now really isn't working, what are we going to do next in the future, you know, kind of make that an option as well, just so, you know, we're not seeing this item at every single time you want to throw an event, just for, for ease of the process as well.
I'm comfortable with that.
So I would, I would make a motion because we need to do something. And I would move that you can discontinue your music at 11 o'clock. And that's what I'm sort of hearing from here and you were agreeing to that, maybe not enthusiastically, but agreeing to that and being able to move people on to other areas. And you have five more events. So my, I move that you can continue until 11 o'clock.
I would just add, you know, if you consider adding to that motion, that the city sends a letter to the neighbors explaining their justification for going past 10:00 PM and, you know, not, not supporting it in earlier time.
I don't want to add that to it. He's already, I have a motion on the floor if we want to discuss it further, someone could second it and then they could just, we could amend it if they choose to.
I'll go ahead and second.
So we have a motion from Councilmember Stillman and a second from Councilmember Matthews. Let's take a.
And I don't agree with what you're suggesting, that we send a letter out. I believe you've made those contacts, you made another contact with Catherine, she can now give your phone number to the entire neighborhood.
Yeah, and I know Joe has been super responsive.
So thank you very much.
But, um.
I, it's only, we, okay.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. You had your three minutes, so we have a motion and a second from Councilmember Stillman and a, and a second from Councilmember Matthews to discontinue the music at 11:00 PM for the arcane artist permit.
Do we want to add the part, and I'm sorry to interrupt you, about for the next, the further events to have the mayor and the vice mayor be able to?
If, if Councilmember Stillman wants to add that to her.
Yes, I would add that.
All right, and then I'll second that.
So do they have to agree on it together? Just one person overrides the other, does that work? Because that's not really a thing.
I think they can agree.
So unanimous vote?
I think we can work with the city manager to be able to, to come to a conclusion that's going to work for the, the community. So we have a motion and a second. We shall vote on it, all in favor.
Aye.
No.
Okay, so motion passes 3-1. Thank you. Okay, and that being said, we are in a later hour, so let's take a quick five-minute break. I know some of us might have to go to the bathroom and stretch our legs, so thank you. Okay. We are back from our short break, and that brings us into new business, item 11, item A under new business. Introduce ordinance number 1558, amending the conflict of interest code, title two, administration, chapter eight, conflict of interest, article two, city employees, section 2915A. And can we please have a staff report from City Attorney Diamond?
Sure. Thank you, Vice Mayor and council members. This is mandated by the FPPC every two years. You have to review your conflict of interest code and make revisions as necessary. So the revision that you're being asked to make is acknowledging the change that the council approved, I believe it was in August recently, in when the information technology manager was reclassified to the deputy director of information technology. So all you would be doing would be amending the ordinance to make that change in the list of designated employees.
Great. Thank you, City Attorney Diamond, for keeping it quick and simple. Do we have any questions or comments on this item from the council?
Well, you know, I'll move for adoption, and if we have a second, then we can have discussion on the motion.
Yeah, I feel like, I don't understand why this is limited to just these people that are, you know, designated. It seems like it would be, make sense, would make sense and be ethical that it applied to, you know, maybe like all full-time city employees. And just one example I can think of, there are a lot of staff that do research and, you know, provide information to some of these people that are designated that potentially, they're plotting right now how to stop me from moving on. But--
I just wanted to have a motion on the floor because it's really protocol.
I wanted to correct the motion. You would be introducing it, and you would consent to, not adopting it, consenting to read by title.
So I'll introduce it. Ordinance number 1558, amending conflict of interest code, title two, administration, chapter eight, conflict of interest, article two, city employees, section 2915, and parentheses A.
Wave reading of the text and--
Wave reading of the text. Thank you.
Yeah. So we're just amending it, right? There already exists a conflict of interest. Correct. Then I second.
And this is our opportunity to make future amendments.
See, what is changing is--
And this is something that is brought down to us by the state, by the FPPC, correct, of what positions, you know, do designate--
Yes.
--constitute this conflict of interest.
The, the FPPC regulations require the city's conflict of interest code to designate those employees who participate in the, in decision-making of the city council or the planning commission in such a way that might materially impact their economic interests. Now, there's a balance here that, that needs to be made between identifying those employees whose economic interests could foreseeably be materially impacted because of their participation in decision-making, and then making everybody disclose because of First Amendment considerations and, and protect, I'm sorry, Fourth Amendment considerations, protecting people's privacy. And that balance is what the FPPC has struck in specifying that the list of designated employees are only those who participate in the decision in a manner to materially impact their economic interests. The city has traditionally listed designated all of the directors, department directors and managers.
Thank you.
So yeah, I feel like one example, like DeLo, for example, like, I don't feel like she's listed here, but she does participate, I feel like, sometimes in decision-making. I mean, we have staff members that, you know, are representatives to committees, which also influence decisions. And so that's just where I'm coming from. I feel like, you know, in the interest of the public, and, you know, just doing what's ethical and right, that we could expand this list.
I'm happy to go with the state recommendations. We have a motion, a second on the floor. Let's take public comment on this item, please.
But these actually aren't state recommendations.
Let's take public comment on this item, please.
But they're not state recommendations, to be clear.
FPPC.
All right. I'm not seeing any in public.
My bad, I misspoke. Thank you, Councilmember Watson, for correcting me so greatly. Thank you.
You're welcome.
I misspoke.
You're welcome.
There is no online public comment on this item.
Anybody here in person? Sarah Jones. Okay. We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
Motion passes 3-1. Thank you. Okay. That brings us now to oral and written communications. Item number 12, the city appreciates this public input. This time is provided for people to address the council on items that are not on the agenda. Again, please note pursuant to Brown Act that the council cannot discuss or take actions on items that are not listed or posted on the agenda. At the end of all oral and written communications, the council may respond to statements. Supported requests that require council action are set by the council for future agendas or referred to staff. Speakers addressing the council here may be limited to three minutes with a maximum of five minutes. Today, we are limiting it to three minutes. And if you are in person and wanting to give public comment, please line up at the podium. And if you are on Zoom, please press star nine now if you are on the phone and you would like to make public comment or raise your hand on Zoom. Speakers are limited to three minutes. When is your time? You will be unmuted and invited to speak. So please begin, Joanne. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joanne McGary, and I'm here at the end of this meeting to talk a little bit about the future of our town and plans that are being discussed currently and the climate realities that are existing. And I was going back over the three years ago when the Coastal Commission was here in Eureka meeting about various matters. They first met about the Indianella cutoff and creating a bypass type of thing, and that was discussed. And then I think the next day, it was a three-day event, we had the opportunity to hear directly from Aldron Laird, who made a presentation about sea level rise and its effect on the 101 corridor. I think as we look to the expansion of development in areas close to the bays, such as the Gateway Area, it would be really, really good to have Aldron Laird himself give a presentation to the public that's on video, like he did to the Coastal Commission, which was a jaw-dropper for the Coastal Commissioners when it came to 101. So I just think that getting information about all these controversial topics that people are sharing with you now, getting an expert in here to talk about it now, so we don't have to dredge things through the mud, literally, and, and hear what he has to say, a geologic expert as well. So let's just get this out of the way, not wait for the EIR, because this is a topic that just keeps getting brought up. So let us get an expert opinion, not through staff, but to the public, to the council, to all of us to hear. So the Coastal Commission did it, the city council of Arcata can do it. Thank you.
Hi. I live in the Creamy District, really close, right in the Gateway area. I'm still learning about the Gateway Project, but I just wanted to come and share that as a family living right in that zone with a property that we're so excited to have and hopefully pass on to our children, that I would be concerned about having apartment buildings built. So the potential of business owners be able to build apartments right around us, I would feel concerned about that. Even at four stories, it feels like an awful lot of windows that could potentially end up right close to our yard, that could see into our yard and see our children every day, you know. So for safety, I would just love for this Arcata City Council to consider, for the safety of residents and for the comfort of residents, to consider not building apartment buildings, you know, more than two stories. It'd be my dream. But to just consider not having them within the surrounding blocks of already existing Arcata residences. So I just wanted to share that. I know that you guys have a big job to look for, to support the necessary growth of our city and affordable housing, and I certainly appreciate that. Thank you.
Good evening, Fred Wise. You mentioned the audio of the joint study session on the arcataone.com website. I did get audio tracks from Eric Black. There's three separate audio tracks. Some are better for different speakers, and the reader or the listener can switch among them. They could be combined, but it would take a few hours of work. But it is a problem in that room setting to get good audio. I'm speaking tonight about the possibility of L Street becoming a linear park, which I think would be a real jewel for Arcata. I've spoken strongly about this before. The, uh, the presentation by Todd Trigenza was very good, but it was missing a whole lot of things, and some of the diagrams were not accurately displayed. There are some misrepresentation. I have, I'm writing an article about that. It'll be done in a couple of days. I've taken all the slides. It's much easier to see the content of the slides when it's a still picture as opposed to on the screen there. And there's a transcription of every word he said, and also the comments and questions afterwards. I've said, and I'll say again, there needs to be depiction of the alternative. We have, we were told a picture's worth a thousand words or more. We need a, the same kind of presentation for if K Street stayed as two-lane, two-way and L Street became a linear park. I think if we saw that, we might see the value of that a little more clearly. The, I feel that putting the southbound traffic on L, it does accomplish certain things, no question about it, but it's a car-oriented solution. My own feeling is that in 20 years, we're not going to have as many cars, I hope, and, but we'll still have the road. The road is going to last for 100 years. So it's, it's just kind of a short-term problem. And as Todd said, we, there is the capacity there for 3,000 or 3,500 more people in Arcata. It would about double it, and that road can handle it, as he said, with adequate left-turning lanes and that sort of thing. To give you an idea of why this is crucial now, the Ag sales building and the AmeriGas sites are both considered to be underutilized sites that are ripe for development. The Form Base Code has to be in place before those are developed, appropriate to the type of road that L Street is going to be, determine what is going to be built on those two sites. I think you understand that. The Transportation Safety, they saw a different presentation, but as David Loia said, they are unlikely to change their minds. I think he felt, and as do I, that they understood the pros and cons of both solutions. There's more on my website when you get to it. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Fred. Do we have anybody waiting online to comment?
There's no online oral-- oh, there's one. All right. Go ahead, James.
Hi, I'll make it brief. Didn't want to follow up on Fred because there's so many good things to talk about with the linear park. As one of the items within the Gateway draft, they do want to see quality spaces and trails within 200 feet of all the living spaces. And with the linear park, you know, not only as that trail that can be the artery to that, it also, you know, represents this gathering space, you know, something almost like you would see in Europe or in cities. And green spaces are considered a really valuable resource for how people get around towns, and, you know, they're welcomed in a lot of their areas. You know, and beyond that, I, I, there's a lot of things, you know, and I'll talk about in the future, but I, I'm encouraged by Fred's comments, and I hope that's something you will take into consideration. So I think it is a valuable aspect to this development because it is going to represent one of the, you know, potential guaranteed parks. You know, it's, it is a corridor that's there, it can be enhanced, it can, it could be more than it is right now, and I hope you'll consider that. All right, thank you.
Great. Thank you, Jim. Appreciate it. Anybody else on Zoom waiting to make comment?
No other online oral communications.
Okay. Thank you. With that, we will close oral communications and come to finally item 13, which is council and staff reports. Do we have any staff updates?
Nope, no further updates tonight.
Okay. And let's hear from our council updates. Okay, well--
I have one thing.
Okay.
One thing is I'm so happy that Tara Cameron is finishing the building on H Street. She painted one side of it, and now she has started on the front, and it'll be really attractive to have it because it looks so terrible. So I have a statement to read. So my name is Alex Stillman, and I'm on the city council of Arcata, and I've been waiting for a letter from the Fair Political Practices Commission to determine if I had a conflict of interest. The letter finally arrived and stated, "The act prohibits Councilmember Stillman from taking part in decisions relating to the Gateway Area Plan because it's reasonably foreseeable that those two decisions would have a disqualifying material effect on her interest in multiple parcels of residential and commercial real estate, all which are located within 500 feet of the Gateway Area Plan boundary." The Fair Political Practices Commission regulates how a disqualified council member to, can continue to communicate with the public or the media, and I've been provided of an advice letter that issued, that had issued earlier on how to correctly use social media if disqualified. An official, quote unquote, "An official's use of social media to make a widely available public post regarding a matter in which he or she is disqualified, conflict of interest, is inaugurous to the official authorization." Well, it's authorizing, this, I'm quoting exactly what he said, quoting, "A newspaper article or appearing on the radio program regarding such a matter or discussing such a matter with members of the community. We caution a higher rate that most posts must be widely available and may not be permitted if the official has limited number of followers or subscribers. Moreover, the official may not directly message city members, officers, employees, or consultants." So I'm pleased that I'm going to be able to support housing in Arcata, whether it's in the Gateway or Valley West or anywhere else in the community, by using social media. I've met the threshold of having enough followers on Instagram and Facebook to be able to utilize social media, and I would appreciate anyone that wants to follow me on either one of those and up my numbers. I would appreciate it. So thank you very much, and that's my statement.
Thank you, Councilmember Stillman. We're going down the line. Okay. The I Block Party was wonderful. It was great to be back after the pandemic. There was some awesome music, great fundraiser for the Sister City Project. It was amazing to see the community out there enjoying themselves, having some great food, enjoying some local beverages. It was just a really great time and a super awesome event to be a part of and support, and looking forward to, you know, seeing what this committee will continue to do for our community. So it was really a great event. Your mic wasn't on, but yes, the chamber, or the main street is getting close to having a position ready to hire somebody. That's wonderful. Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just was thinking earlier, the, we, you know, touched on the Public Safety Committee's recommendations, so maybe, you know, if the council agreed, that would be a good thing to, to bring back and talk about in the future. And that's all I have. Thanks.
Great. Thank you. Yeah, I would also be interested in looking at some of, I remember there was some talk, and we had a presentation about the mural projects to be on the bridge and stuff like that. So I think there are quite a few of us that would be interested in hearing more about those projects and working on wonderful beautification things that help our Cal Poly community. Okay. Dates of future meetings, there's nothing, and now I feel like I get to use the gavel because I'm the one leading the meetings, first time. Okay. Meeting adjourned.